Roll call.
Right now, okay. I would like to, I would like to call this meeting to order. I would like to note that the interpreter for this evening is Gamiel Anguiano. Mr. Aguiano, can you raise your hand back there? And please ask him for listening devices if you would like interpretation services. Antes de llamarla la junta ahora, me gustaría notar que contamos con servicios de interpretación para esta junta. El intérprete está, el señor Anguino, se ha sentado atrás. I'd like to call this meeting to order for the City Council meeting of May 6, 2025. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Flores.
Here.
Councilmember Soto.
Here.
Mayor Potem Esquivel.
Here.
And Mayor Patino.
Here. We will now be presenting a proclamation and a presentation for Water Awareness Month. Councilmember Soto will be presenting the proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This proclamation is to be accepted by Myra Ritchie, Water Conservation Specialist, whereas the city of Santa Maria maintains a robust water awareness and conservation program that includes community outreach, school education, complimentary home water visits, and suspected leak notifications to residential and commercial customers. And whereas every industry, business, and resident can make a difference by conserving water at work, home, and school. And whereas residents of all ages and businesses and industries of all types are invited to, invited and encouraged to implement just one of many tips and ideas to help conserve and save water in Santa Maria. Now therefore, Alice Patino, Mayor of the city of Santa Maria hereby proclaims the month of May 2025 as Water Awareness Month in the city of Santa Maria and encourages everyone to do their part to conserve and preserve this precious resource. Myra Ritchie?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council Members, Department Heads, and fellow city residents. On behalf of the Utilities Department, thank you again upon receiving this proclamation. As stated, May is Water Awareness Month. Our department has a robust water conservation program that we've been promoting for several years. We educate not only residents, residential and commercial, industrial, and institutional. We participate in events throughout the year. We educate our community not only in English but in Spanish as far as print ads, our local radio stations, San Maria Sun, PSAs, San Maria Times, and all social media platforms. With that said, we also participate in other outside resources along with the Santa Barbara County Regional Water Efficiency Programs. We collaborate with them. So with that said, thank you again. May Water Awareness, not only do we celebrate for this month but throughout the years as well. This year, we also is now promoting the 14th Annual Water Awareness Poster Contest. And so I'm happy that we had close to 300 posters that were submitted this year. We had a total of four judges. We had also seven local elementary schools that participated in 12 different classes. So without further ado, I'd like to present this year's student winners. So first category is most educational. And we have from David Sanchez School in Mrs. Peterson's class, Brizetta Pasano.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council Members. My name is Brizetta Pasano. My teacher's name is Miss Peterson. I am in third grade and I'm nine years old. My poster's about water awareness. Water is important to all of us because if there's no water, there's no good air. If there's no good air, then there's no lives. I like my poster because it can show us how to save water in the whole world. For example, you should pour a bucket if you see dripping water so you can use it to water plants. Thank you for this award.
Next, we have for best celebration of water from David Sanchez School in Mrs. Montoya's class, Dierolyn Rojas.
Good, good evening, Madam Mayor and Council Members. My name is Dierolyn Rojas. My teacher's name is Julie Montoya. I am in third grade and I am a year old. My poster's about water conservation. Water's important to all of us because we use it in a lot of different ways. For example, we drink water and use it to water plants to washing. I like my poster because it shows many different ways to save water. Thank you for this award.
Next up, we have for most artistic from Alvin School in Mrs. Long's class, Anthony Salazar Matias.
Good evening, Council Members. I mean, good evening, Madam Mayor and Council Members. My name is Anthony Salazar Matias. My teacher's name is Mrs. Long. I am in third grade and I am nine years old. My, my poster is about water awareness. Water is important to all of us because it is one of the most important resources in earth. It is essential for humans, agriculture, and the environment. We need water to grow fruits and vegetables. I like my poster because it looks pretty and I like the draw and color. One day I will become an artist and a veterinarian biologist. Thank you for this award.
Next, we have for most water aware from Alvin School, Mrs. Lee's class, Saraii Fuentes Coro.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council Members. My name is Saraii and my teacher's name is Miss Lopez. I am in third grade and I'm nine years old. My poster's about water awareness. And water is important to all of us because we can't live without water. I like my poster because I enjoy doing it and I like the colors I put. Thank you for this award.
Next, we have for most colorful from Alvin School, Mrs. McPeters' class, Vanessa Felix Duran.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council Members. My name is Vanessa. My teacher's name is Miss Peters. I am in third grade and I am nine years old. My poster is about water awareness. Water is important to all be, all of us because we need it for hygiene, cooking, and plants and animals. I like my poster because it shows how to save water. I was able to show it to my family so we could save water. Thank you for this award.
And the last category and new this year, we have for best slogan in Alvin School, Mrs. Long's class, Esmeralda Ramirez Juarez.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Esmeralda Ramirez. My teacher's name is Miss Long. Thank you for letting me be here. My poster is about water awareness. Water is important to us because without it, we won't have clean air or oxygen.
You're doing really good. Just tell us about your poster. Go ahead.
Don't worry about the rest of people.
One, one thing I like about my poster is that it shows a vibrant earth because of all the water. Thank you for letting me receive this award.
Thank you so much. If I can have another round of applause for these students who placed this year. Also, a huge thank you to our sponsors. We also like to thank each and every one of the teachers who have participated, the teachers and the families who are presented here today. Again, too, it takes a lot for these students to take their time and the teachers to educate these students about water awareness and the importance of water conservation. Again, it was hard to judge, 300 posters. I was not one of the judges, but again, too, we had a great time. I think for all the teachers, for your patience, San Maria Bonita School District. As far as the sponsors, we had quite a few sponsors that helped out this year. A huge thank you to Emerald Wave Media, American General Media, Santa Maria Valley Discovery Museum, Boomers, Sky Zone, Rancho Bowl, Baskin Robbins, California Hot Dogs, the Recreation and Parks Department, and the Utilities Department. So as we depart, we all would like to tell you again, thank you, and remember to make water conservation a way of life. Thank you.
And before anyone leaves, I would like to thank all the teachers. Could all the teachers stand up from these schools? And I would also like to acknowledge all the parents that brought their kids, and please stand. And Esmeralda, all of us up here have done this at one time or another. Please don't feel, but don't feel bad and don't feel, go home and think, gee, I wish I could have done something different. We've all done it, but you'll remember it for a long time. It'll be special. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It looks like there's room now up in the front, so. The next proclamation will be Toastmasters International District 33 Day. And Miss, and Councilmember Esquivel will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's an honor and privilege to present this, this recognition to Toastmasters International District 33. Very biased on this, about this organization. I've been part of it for more than 14 years. It's a great, it's a great organization. It's just, and also I serve as director for D3, Area D3. So I know these guys, they're rock. They do a lot of great stuff in the community. They create leaderships. So here we go.
If you'd like to wait, close the door.
I'll wait.
Okay.
Let's get the police.
Can we, can we close the door in the back because we're getting all that sound? I would appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Esquivel.
Perfect. Thank you. I was gonna raise my voice, but this is better. Whereas Toastmasters International is a nonprofit education organization that teaches public speaking and leadership skills through a global network of clubs, serving over 270,000 members in more than 14 clubs across 150 countries. It has empowered individuals from diverse backgrounds to become more confident speakers, communicators, and leaders, contributing to stronger communities and workplaces. And whereas District 33 of Toastmasters International, established in 1949, proudly serves a large portion of the central California, including approximately 125 clubs and over 1,400 members organized into eight divisions, and has continuously worked to build new clubs and support all clubs in achieving excellence. District 33 provides a supportive and engaging environment where members gain essential communication, leadership, and professional development skills through hands-on experiences, workshops, and constructive feedback. And whereas the annual District 33 Conference, taking place on May 17, 2025 in Santa Maria, California, will bring together Toastmasters members from across the region for a day of skills building, inspiration, and connection through events such as the International Speech Contest, Table Topics Contest, Leadership Development Sessions, and the Communication and Leadership Award Luncheon, honoring Kim Colvins Davis, Executive Director of CASA of Santa Barbara County, for her outstanding service and impact. Whereas the city of Santa Maria recognizes and commands Toastmasters International on District 33 for the commitment to personal and professional growth, civic engagement, and the development of strong, effective leaders in our community. Now therefore, Alice Empatino, Mayor of the city of Santa Maria, hereby proclaim May 17, 2025 as Toastmasters International District 33 Day in the city of Santa Maria, and encourage all, all residents to recognize, maybe join as well, and support the mission and values of Toastmasters International and District 33 in developing, developing communication and leadership excellence. And here to receive this proclamation, we have Ken Jarrett, Eomi Esprag, sorry if I pronounced it incorrectly, and Don Scott, representing Toastmasters.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council Members. I'm Ken Jarrett, Division D Director for Toastmasters, and I'm honored to be accepting this proclamation on behalf of District 33. Toastmasters International is a nonprofit organization and our mission is to empower individuals to improve communication and leadership skills. And I'm honored to be joined by a few other great leaders in Toastmasters today. As you heard, we have Area Director and Councilmember Carlos Escobedo. He's a leader in Toastmasters. We also have the city-sponsored Club Officers, City Slickers. Joining us today, Don Scott and Aaron Litten. And I'm also joined by our Administrative Manager for District 33, Distinguished Toastmaster Yumi Sprag. Each year, District 33 hosts an annual conference and part of that conference includes the speech contest where the winners of that advance on to have the opportunity to participate in the World Championship of Public Speaking. That's our most distinguished award in Toastmasters International. This year, we're really excited to be hosting the contest on the beautiful Central Coast and we're gonna be having our conference in downtown Santa Maria at the historic Santa Maria Inn. Really excited to be here this year and we're looking forward to it. Thank you.
And if I, if I just might add one thing. I saw great examples of young Toastmasters this evening, so. Mr. Escobedo?
Oh, guys, before you take off, I just want to mention about, as I mentioned at the beginning, well, there was some noise. I've been part of this organization for 14 years and it really changed your life because when you're able to say what you want to say with confidence and that's, that makes a huge difference. I would dare to say that one of the reasons why I'm sitting here as a council member is because of that. Because I was able to get the tools and get to know people and mentors that had helped me to grow as a person and not just as a public speaker, but also as an individual. And that just makes a huge difference. So thank you, guys, because these guys, everything you do is volunteer work. So thank you for everything you do for Santa Maria.
Thank you. The next proclamation is Municipal Clerks Week. That'll be presented by Councilmember Soto.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Oh, which one? Oh, I think I got the wrong one here. Thank you. Whereas the Office of the Municipal Clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world. And whereas the Office of the Municipal Clerk is the oldest among, among public servants and it is the most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of the Municipal Clerk. And whereas the Office of the Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas municipal clerks have the, have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal services to all. And whereas the Municipal Clerk serves as, serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of the Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meeting of their, meetings of their state, provincial, county, and professional organizations. Now therefore, Alice Empatino, Mayor of the city of Santa Maria, hereby, hereby proclaims the week of May 4 through May 10, 2025 as Municipal Clerks Week in the city of Santa Maria and further extend appreciation to our elected City Clerk Patty Rodriguez, Chief Deputy City Clerk Donna Schwartz, Assistant City Clerk Alexandra Valdez, and our Deputy City Clerk Ashley Garcia Nega for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the community they represent. Donna?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. It's mine or to accept this proclamation for our elected City Clerk Patty Rodriguez. If I can just add a little bit of background about us. Initiated in 1969 by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, Municipal Clerks Week, an annual week of recognition and reflection on the importance of the clerk's office, is recognized during the first week of May. This being the 56th Annual Municipal Clerks Week this year, May 4 through the 10, 2025. No other office in the municipal service has so many contacts. It serves the mayor, the city council, the city manager, all administrative departments, and the public. Without exception, all of them call upon it almost daily for some service or information. Given the diverse responsibility of the clerk's office, a comprehensive understanding of law, procedures, administration, and interpersonal relations is essential. Therefore, clerks are dedicated to pursuing ongoing education and professional networking opportunities to strengthen the role as an integral member of the municipal team. My assistant City Clerk Alexandra wasn't able to attend this evening, but my Deputy City Clerk Ashley is here with me, next to me, and we are honored to be a part of this team.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next proclamation this evening is Compost Awareness Week, and Councilmember Flores will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The proclamation for Compost Awareness Week will be accepted by Bob Engel. And it says, whereas the compost, compost, blah, blah. I need water. Compost Research and Education Foundation, along with Canada, Australia, the United Kingdom, and other countries, have declared the first week of May to be the annual International Compost Awareness Week. Organic materials suitable for composing represent a large percentage of materials that are landfilled and can be composted each year and composting in an effective form of waste reduction, reuse, and recycling. And it improves the soil structure, reduces erosion and runoff, supplies the- And it improves the soil structure, reduces erosion and runoff, supplies the soil with a variety of macro and macronutrients, and enables and amends soils to use less water. And whereas using sustainable soil, enriching compost help prevent the erosion of valuable topsoil without depleting valuable wildlife habitats. Community sustainability is enhanced by green waste, bio solids, and other organic materials, and promoting the use of renewable resources in landscaping, horticulture, and agriculture. And whereas returning compost organic resources to the soil is a method of decreasing the dependence on chemical fertilizers, decreasing erosion, reducing water consumption, and non-point pollution. And whereas the City of Santa Maria has initiated green waste and food waste collective programs to aid in the efforts of environmental, Engel and Gray incorporation. Regional composing facility, Santa Maria has been successfully composing organic materials for sustainable agricultural practice since nineteen ninety-three, and the city has invested in collection, two programs to meet state requirements and save valuable landfill space. And now therefore, I, Alice Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby recognize the week of May fourth through the tenth, two thousand and twenty-five, as Compost Awareness Week, and I am glad with all those composts.
Glad to have you here for your annual composting.
Mayor, Phil, the City Council Members, thank you very much for, again, recognizing International Compost Awareness Week. For, like it said, nineteen ninety-three, thirty-three years, we've been composting, basically for the City of Santa Maria and the surrounding agencies, providing to build healthy soil. And healthy soil means a lot in agriculture, even in the front yard and gardens. It conserves water, which Maya would attest to. I think I'm going to get her kids to do a poster about compost and saving water. Anyway, but we worked hard at it. We are having a big event this Saturday at seven forty-five West Bedaravia Road at our yard there. We're going to have free compost, complimentary compost, because compost has a lot of value to it. But you can bring a bucket, a bag, a trunk, you can load your trunk up with compost. We're going to have transplants. We're going to have a station where children and adults can make potting soil, blending the compost with sand and other products, and then planting vegetable transplants into a pot. We'll have the pots and the vegetable transplants. We'll also have extra vegetable transplants. If you want to go home and start your garden on a fresh start, you can do that. We'll have all kinds of different lettuces and chilies and all kinds of stuff. So a lot of fun, a lot of free popcorn. You'll see how compost is made. You can see the problems with compost. The city will be there. If you're a city resident, you'll be able to show proof of that and get a compost bucket for your kitchen. Anyway, so come out and see us Saturday from ten to one. We'd love to have you. And thank you again on behalf of the United States Composting Council for recognizing International Compost Awareness Week. Thank you.
And Mr. Engel, thank you for bringing us a beautiful plant every year. We appreciate it. And I think I have every single one of the containers, other than the one I ran over inadvertently, but all of them, thank you so much. The next presentation will be Go Rodeo Days, which I will be reading. I want a disclaimer here. Rodeo, I think, is the verb, and rodeo, which is the correct pronunciation, is the noun. And whereas, whoops, got the wrong one. Whereas, the time is fast approaching for the eighty-second Annual Elks Rodeo and Parade, May twenty-eighth through June first, two thousand and twenty-five, in the City of Santa Maria, considered by many to be the event of the year. And whereas, continuing the tradition of Clarence Minetti and Leland Butch Seamus, hundreds of loyal Elk Lodge fifteen thirty-eight members have volunteered and have drafted to make this rodeo a tremendous success and to cause Elks Lodge fifteen thirty-eight to be named number-one Elk Lodge in the United States numerous times over the past thirty-six years. And whereas, the Santa Maria Elks Rodeo Parade will begin at ten o'clock on Saturday morning of May thirty-first and continue down Broadway from Mill to Enos Street. Immediately after the parade, the street fair will begin at thirteen twenty-one South Broadway. And whereas, it has been a longstanding tradition to begin wearing Western clothes several weeks prior to the Elks Rodeo. And somehow, some people in the city didn't get the memo, just for next year. Now therefore, I, Alice Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby recognize May sixth through June first, two thousand and twenty-five, as Go Rodeo Days in the City of Santa Maria, and encourage all residents and businesses to enter the rodeo spirit of wearing Western apparel. And it's been witnessed hereof the sixth day of May, two thousand and twenty-five. And here to receive it is Peter Sterling. Can I be out in the hallway? I didn't even see him come in. Anyway, I will save this for Peter, may not have been able to make it. Thank you very much. The next proclamation will be National Police Week, which will be presented by Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez.
And I guess the police officers get a waiver from wearing rodeo wear. Whereas all the promises America offers, none is more precious or elusive than the right to be free from crime. And whereas the dedicated men and women who have chosen law enforcement as a career face extraordinary risk and danger in preserving our freedom and security. And whereas during the week of May eleventh through May seventeenth, National Police Week is observed to recognize the hazardous work, serious responsibility, and strong commitment of our nation's peace officers. And whereas in conjunction with this important observance, the City of Santa Maria is observing May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in commemoration of those noble officers who have tragically sacrificed their lives in the line of duty. And whereas three California police officers are recognized as being killed in the line of duty during two thousand and twenty-four. And whereas these special observances provide all Santamarians with the opportunity to appreciate the heroic men and women who have dedicated their lives to preserving public safety. Now therefore, Alice M. Patino, the Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby recognizes the week of May eleventh through the seventeenth as National Police Week, and proclaims Wednesday, May fourteenth, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in the City of Santa Maria, and encourages all residents to remember those individuals who gave their lives for our safety and express our appreciation to those who continue to dedicate themselves to making the Santa Maria a safer place in which to live. And witnessed thereof, she has set her hand and has caused the seal of the City of Santa Maria to be affixed here to the sixth day of May, two thousand and twenty-fifth. And to receive this is Sergeant Jason Seker.
Madam Mayor, City Council Members, on behalf of the Santa Maria Police Department and the broader law enforcement community, I humbly accept this proclamation recognizing National Police Week and Police Officer Memorial Day. This week, we pause to honor the courage and the sacrifice of police officers who have given their lives in the line of duty, both here in Santa Maria and across the nation. Our dedication to protecting our community serves as a profound reminder of the risk inherent in law enforcement and the unwavering commitment required to uphold public safety. We are grateful to the City of Santa Maria for this recognition and for standing with us in remembrance and in support. Thank you, everybody, and hope to see you in a couple of weeks for Memorial Day.
The next proclamation this evening is National Public Works Week, and Councilmember Flores will be doing the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And the proclamation for National Public Works Week is to be accepted by Brett Fulgoni, our very own. It says, whereas the City Council in the City of Santa Maria has supported the role of the Public Works and Utilities Department to provide vital services to the community, which are an integral part of the city's residents' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an informed community are vital to the operation of public work systems, programs, such as the production and delivery of clean water, water waste collection, treatment, stormwater collection, treatment and control, solid waste collection, and disposal, streets and highways, public transit, public buildings, and fleet services. And whereas the health, safety, and comfort of the community greatly depends on these facilities and service, and whereas the quality of the effectiveness of these services and facility, as well as their planning, design, and construction, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff the Public Works and Utility Department is materially influenced by the residents' attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. And now therefore, I, Alice Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby recognize the week of May eighteen through twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five, as National Public Works Week.
So I didn't realize that I was going to have to follow Compost Awareness Week, but I will do my best here. On behalf of the Public Works Department, as well as our partners in utilities and recreation and parks, thank you for the proclamation recognizing National Public Works Week. It's an honor to represent the teams who keep our city running quietly and reliably through every season and challenge, from clean water and safe streets to vibrant parks, reliable transit. These dedicated professionals work hard every day to serve the people of the city, and this recognition means a lot to all of us, and we truly appreciate the support from our council and the community. As a part of the celebration, we're hosting a Public Works Week barbecue on May twenty-first. You are all welcome to attend, along with, it's along with our department directors. It's something that we do for our staff every year, that the city does for our staff every year, to kind of recognize the work that they do. And I just want to thank you again for honoring all of those public servants that we currently enjoy getting to work with. So, thank you.
And just to note, Mr. Fulgoni, I know that the Public Works has the best barbecue every year, and they have the best selection of salsas every year. So, thank you.
We have an objection over here.
So there probably be more people than usual, so get more meat than usual, yeah.
I saw our utilities director objecting, but I, sorry.
Thank you. Besides nine-one-one, we get more calls for potholes. So this is the guy that takes care of all that. So in the City of Santa Maria, people get really upset when their potholes aren't fixed. Thank you. So the next proclamation I will be presenting, and it's an honor for me to be able to present this. This is a gentleman I have known since we both had dark hair, right? And what he has done and the contribution to our valley has been immense for our youth. Whereas Ricardo Galbadon, senior, founded the Regueti High School Marimba Band and Ballet Folklorico in nineteen seventy-five, as the cornerstone of the school's bilingual, bicultural program, creating a space for students of all backgrounds, particularly Chicano and Latino youth, to experience and celebrate the richness of Mexican music and dance. And whereas, Mr. Galbadon devoted forty years to teaching at Regueti High School, where he guided the group to delivering over fifteen hundred performances across the Central Coast, serving schools, civic organizations, and community groups, and offering young students the chance to witness positive cultural representation and role models in action. And whereas, many of the group's performances have been held at elementary schools across the Central Coast, allowing younger students to participate in the experience, the beauty and the joy of Mexican culture as portrayed by local teens, and helping instill pride, aspiration, and respect for cultural traditions. And whereas, the Marimba Band and Ballet Folklorico, under his leadership, became a powerful tool for building self-esteem, cultural identity, and cross-cultural understanding, while maintaining a longstanding tradition of excellence in performance. And whereas, Mr. Galbadon's dedication has left an enduring impact, not only on Regueti High School, but also on the broader community and his legacy, continuing through his son, Ricardo A. Galbadon, junior, who now directs the program and teaches Spanish Regueti. And whereas, the Galbadon's family, ongoing leadership, ensures that future generations will continue to be inspired by music, dance, and pride in heritage. Now therefore, I, Alice M. Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, do hereby proudly recognize and honor Ricardo Galbadon, senior, for the extraordinary dedication to cultural education, youth empowerment, and exemplary leadership in the folklorico arts, as well as invaluable contributions to preserving and enriching the cultural heritage of the City of Santa Maria. You know, I know that early on, and I knew Mr. Galbadon and what he gave to his students, and he never, never, in those forty years, lost enthusiasm. It just kept going and kept going. And we really need to acknowledge his wife, Rose, who stood behind him and helped doing all this. And I know at the beginning, the parents were making all the beautiful costumes for the people. I guess that's not true anymore, but, oh, Rose was probably making them too. But he started this at Regueti High School, and so now you can see it throughout our valley, that they saw a good thing and they copied it. But he was, every weekend, it seemed like, he was someplace with his kids. And how much the valley really appreciates what you've done, Ricardo, because it's immense, and it's so important. But thank you.
Mayor Patino and council members, thank you very much for this recognition. I arrived in Santa Maria nineteen seventy-four as a very young and inexperienced educator, yet I was given the task of serving as the coordinator of the Title VII Bilingual Bicultural Education Program at Regueti High School. And what became very apparent to me at that time was that we had to have a strong cultural program to involve students of Chicano, Mexican-American, Mexican heritage, in the life of our school and in the life of our community. And I was exposed to a group at Roosevelt High School in Fresno. They had a marimba band. The marimba is a musical instrument similar to a xylophone. It became the centerpiece of our group. Our Ballet Folklorico shares Mexican folk dances from a variety of regions. And I think the group is probably up to about two thousand performances now, in terms of the entirety of everything, because they average about forty performances a year. And it was a struggle getting started, but we persevered, and things just got better and better. We had some very distinguished performances over the years, and the one that I just want to mention is nineteen ninety-eight. Our group was selected to participate in the All-America City delegation that went to Mobile, Alabama. So if you drive the streets of Santa Maria and you see that All-America City designation there, our group had a large part, a large role in getting that recognition. It's a very great distinction. I used to challenge my students to get educated, come back and take my place, and no one would take me up on the offer, because I always thought that there was someone much more talented than myself, and I just was hoping that that day would come. Let me also mention that in addition to all our performances, our group does a lot of fundraising, and yes, we wanted to motivate our students to continue their education, go on and get their college degrees. go on and get their college degrees. In 1984, we gave our first scholarship to a graduating senior, Sly Rodriguez, who used to be the owner of Hudson's Grill, all right? $100 was all we could handle. Well, yearly now, I think we're, they're up to about $10,000. It just kind of depends. So things have changed dramatically. But backing up, there was a little kid who was born in 1977, and as a two-year-old, he used to love to move microphone stands around for our group. And then when he came to high school, I forget what year that was, I should know, but he came to high school, he always wanted to be the first one in class, because he wanted to set up all the equipment, because he knew that his dad would take too long to go over the details of that day's activities, always giving instructions. So my son would come in, and he would set up the drums, he would set out the marimba, he would put, position the microphones, so that everything would be ready to go at 8:00. And I think he just gained, you know, that love, that joy, that sense of dedication and involvement. And so finally, when I retired in 19, no, not 19, in 2014, 11 years ago, my son, Ricardo Alejandro Galvadon, took over as director of the Reguetti Marimba Band and Ballet Folklorico, and now he's continuing the legacy. So I'd like to introduce my son, Ricardo. Would you please step up and give a little round of applause here? I always thought that we worked really well together. We were a good pair, a winning pair, if you will, all right? And again, it's, I'm just proud that he's continued the legacy. My granddaughter, Isalic Galvadon, Isalic, would you step up, please? Isalic is a dancer, and she's a singer. She's got a terrific voice, and she's a great musician. So there's, and she said, when he was hired to become my successor, she said one day she wanted to become the first female director of the group. Not going to hold her to that, but that's the way it goes, all right? And of course, my wife Rose, who made many of our first costumes, and daughter-in-law, Michelle, would you please stand? Michelle teaches at Pioneer Valley, and next year, she's going to compete with Reguetti, I believe. Maybe it's going to be friendly competition. She's going to take over the Pioneer Valley Ballet Folklorico. So, you know, just some cool side stuff. One more thing, and then I'll hand it over to my son. But we've had a lot of, a lot of individuals that have gained success. They've gone on, you know, bachelor's, master's, they've gone into medicine and law and engineering, and many of them have become musicians. We haven't had a professional dancer that I can recall, but we have had several that have become professional musicians. The Espinosa Brothers, years ago, had a group called Grupo Carino, and then they later changed their name to Los Fugitivos. They were based in Santa Maria for many, many years. They traveled the world performing. They've been to Venezuela, Brazil, they've been to Germany and England, and they've performed here in Santa Maria as well, all right? So they're, they're gained a lot of recognition. But one other individual that some of you might be aware of is Prior Baird, all right? Prior Baird, the orchet legend, was a two-year member of our band, and he just loved playing Mexican and Latin music. So we've had a lot of success, and I'm very proud of the efforts of everyone. And then again, my son, you know, taking over and carrying things forward. Thank you all.
Madam Mayor, council members, I just wanted to say that I'm living the dream of carrying on this legacy, and I'm really proud to carry on providing all those opportunities for my students. I'm really proud of my dad and having, I'm very grateful of having a role model in my dad and as a former teacher that showed me a career path where I could feel so much impact and the, the ability to give the students that connection to their school, to the community, and it's just really rewarding. And so, thank you, Dad, and thank God for putting me in this, in this place. And thank you.
And one, one final thing. Each year, the group does a ton of performances. There's one highlight performances, that performance that is held at the Elche Boat Auditorium, Santa Maria High School, and that is the big show. It's a really spectacular production that is put on by high school students, grades nine through 12, under my son's direction. It's usually a two-hour production. If you ever see any of the posters, I mean, by all means, you need to go. It is, it is something that is really spectacular, has been for a ton of years, all right? And so 50 years of marimba and ballet, and the big show is something that we started up probably about 37 years ago. And so that's another big tradition. Maybe it's more than that, more, 47, I believe. So anyway, Reguetti High School Marimba Band Ballet Folklorico, hope to see you all there someday. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And again, thank you very much, Ricardo, what you've done for our community, what you've done for the valley. Very much appreciated.
I'd, I'd also like to thank you.
Yes.
It's important for me because you, you brought your dancers to my wedding, so my wedding guests were able to enjoy. And, you know, the cultural importance of Ballet Folklorico is so important to our community in particular, to the kids who don't have anywhere to fit in because they're theater kids, dancers, you know? And so it's so important that you guys have continued that legacy, and I just want to say, I want to thank you so much for providing that service and dedication to our community. Thank you.
As a former Ballet Folklorico dancer, not here, I did have the pleasure of being under your direction, but I have seen what Mr. Galvadon Jr. have done, working with Alan Hanka back in a couple of years ago, seeing that passion, the way that you treat the students with professionalism, and you will challenge them, and, you know, it shows every time, every, I, I've, I've been to the, to the show, to the big show, and it is big, it's impressive, it's a, it's the most seen, and not just one time, but a couple of times that you may, so, yeah, thank you for what you've done for, for Orchetos and for Santa Maria.
At this time, we're proud to introduce the city's new Chief of Police, our city manager, Dave Rollins. We'll begin with the formal presentation, and following that, I'll administer the oath of office, and we'll end with the pinning of the badge by Richard Williams, the father of our new Chief of Police. And I want all of you gentlemen in the back to know how safe we feel here tonight.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. Tonight is my great privilege to introduce our new police chief, Chris Williams. Chris is coming to us from the city of Oxnard. He's a, grew up in Oxnard, a graduate of Santa Clara High School. He holds a bachelor's degree in organizational management from the University of Laverne, and a master's degree in homeland security and emergency management from National University. During his career, he has worked numerous assignments, including school resource officer, special enforcement team, graffiti investigator, gang investigator, patrol sergeant, sergeant of the violent crime unit, and homicide sergeant. He was selected Supervisor of the Year in 2011. He's also a graduate of the FBI National Academy, class number 273, in September of 2018. In January of 2022, he was selected as the Professional Standards Division Commander, where he managed the Internal Affairs Unit, the Personnel and Training Unit, and the Department's Peer Support Team. In May of 2022, he was promoted to Assistant Police Chief, and was assigned to the Investigative and Administrative Services Bureau. He believes in the activist community. He has participated with Habitat for Humanity, for Humanity, volunteering as a youth basketball and football coach, walking dogs at animal shelters, loves staying active in his neighborhood. Chief Williams succeeds former chief Mark Schneider, who retired November of 2024 after three decades of service. We had a panel of professionals, we had a citizen panel and an internal staff panel interviewing all the candidates, and Chief Williams came out on top of the panels. We're looking forward to have him here and join our team, and I'd like to have us all welcome Chief Williams to the city of Santa Maria.
the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, and you take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter?
I do.
You need to know I'm going to give you more than three minutes, okay? So take your time.
Actually, Madam Mayor, I've seen how you run city council meetings, so I knew to keep it under three minutes. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm overwhelmed with emotion. It's truly an honor to be here this evening with you all. I had to take a couple of notes because I didn't want to get sidetracked. First and foremost, I want to thank God for truly blessing me, my family, and all that He's given us. I am very grateful to the city manager, Mr. Rollins, and having faith in my leadership, in my ability, and that all the city council and Madam Mayor. I'd be remiss if I don't recognize my wife of almost 21 years. We've been through a lot. I've worked long nights and lots of busy call-outs throughout my career, and she's been by my side the whole time, and I appreciate that. To my kids, thank you for everything, and I'll leave at that because I'm going to start getting emotional. I want to give a special thanks to my parents, my mother-in-law. It's very, I'm very honored to have my dad come up and pin my badge. Back when I got hired in 1997, he pinned my first badge when I became a police officer, and he's pinned my badge every rank that I've been promoted to, and it's really a special moment for me to have him. He was a former highway patrolman, so please don't hold that against him. But truly, both my parents have set the pathway for me to be successful. I'm very grateful for all my friends and family. A shout-out to Father Duam, who was my pastor at St. Anthony's Church. He drove all the way from Orange County. He reached out to me when he heard that I was being promoted a chief and said he wouldn't miss it, so I appreciate Father for you coming out. This isn't just a celebration for me, but for everyone here, because you all have helped me to be that I, the person that I am today. I know that many people looking out in the crowd, and I know there's a bunch of people in the hallway, you travel great distances to come here, from Orange County all the way up to, from Northern California. I'm very appreciative of all my brothers and sisters in law enforcement from Ventura County that showed up here. It truly means the world to me that you're here to share in this special moment with me. To Chief Benitez, Chief Whitney, Chief Shorts, and retired Assistant Chief Hookstra, thank you for investing in me and developed me into the leader that I am today. I'm forever grateful. To the Santa Maria Police Employees, I want you to know that I'm committed to the success of our organization and working with each of you to find the best way to serve our community. To the community of Santa Maria, as Mr. Rollins pointed out, I'm very engaged in the community and love, forming partnerships with our community, and that commitment isn't going to change. I'm here to be, to hear your concerns and how we can better improve our community and form lasting partnerships. A lot of people ask me why I chose the city of Santa Maria, and from the get-go, I watched a, a few city council meetings, and I really appreciate the efficient and effective leadership that you on council provide to the community. And that includes all the directors in all the departments. You really run a tight ship, and I appreciate your kindness that you have welcomed me into the city of Santa Maria. I'm very excited for this next chapter and fostering lifelong relationships and friendships as I had done in my previous agency with the city of Oxnard. Thank you all again for coming out and celebrating with me.
I guess Highway 101 is going to get busy. It works. Too many compounds. Is one of those proclamations?
Is there more here? Trying to get in?
Trying to get in? Thank you. The next item of the presentation will be a Presentation of Businesses of the Quarter. Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez will be making the presentations along with Michael Boyer, President and CEO of the Chamber of Commerce. City Manager, Mr. Rollins, will now introduce the new Director of Finance.
All right, now we will top the police chief.
That's an important person, so.
Yes, yes. So now we are going to be topping the police chief. This time also very pleased to introduce everybody here to Ms. Rebecca Campbell. She is our new Finance Director. Her first day was yesterday. Ms. Campbell brings leadership experience from multiple agencies and from serving in the U.S. Navy. Most recently, she has been consulting for San Bernardino County, and part of that, she served with San Luis Obispo County as the Assistant Administrative Officer, where she was closely involved in preparing and executing the county's budget, including a $1 billion all-funds budget for fiscal year 2024, 2025. Ms. Campbell also served at Kings County as their Chief Administrative Officer after working for the agency for 12 years. She happened to manage a day-to-day operations with a $445 million budget. Ms. Campbell served 10 years in the U.S. Navy as an electronics technician. She was named Navy Sailor of the Year and received multiple medals for outstanding service. Ms. Campbell has a master's degree in business administration, and I am very excited to welcome her to our team. She's already started looking at the finances. I have the utmost confidence in her abilities and looking forward to working with her and our team over the years to come. Again, I'd like to introduce Ms. Rebecca Campbell.
Good evening, Mayor Patino and members of the council. I am honored to take, to step into the position, and I believe in transparency, collaboration, and excellent customer service, so I welcome the chance to work with you and for the rest of the city directors and staff. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Campbell. And welcome to the city of Santa Maria. Thank you. Welcome, and thank you for taking the position. It's a difficult one. So, the next item will be a Presentation of Businesses of the Quarter, and Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez will be making the presentations along with Michael Boyer, President and CEO of the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you, Mr. Boyer.
Good evening, Mayor Patino and council.
Excuse me, let's just wait till the door is closed. It's noisy.
Great. Good evening, Mayor Patino and council. On behalf of the Santa Maria Chamber of Commerce in partnership with the city of Santa Maria, it's my honor to recognize Dudley Hoffman Mortuary as one of our Businesses of the Quarter. Founded in 1876, Dudley Hoffman has served our community for nearly 150 years, offering trusted service, thoughtful care, and a place of comfort for families during their most difficult times. Their legacy is one of compassion and innovation. From introducing one of the region's first motorized casket coaches to developing tranquility memory gardens and iconic Tower of Light, they have continually adapted to meet the evolving needs of the families they serve. Their team of 17 dedicated professionals brings empathy and integrity to each interaction. As a family-owned business, they exemplify what makes Santa Maria special, resilient, compassionate, and committed to service. We are proud, proud to recognize Dudley Hoffman Mortuary tonight and thank them for their longstanding impact and unwavering dedication to our community. They are not able to be here tonight, but let's thank them. Thank you. And secondly, on behalf of the Santa Maria Chamber of Commerce in partnership with the city of Santa Maria, I am proud to recognize Straw Hat Pizza as one of our Businesses of the Quarter. Since 1967, under local franchise ownership since 1984, Straw Hat Pizza has been a staple of our community. With a welcoming atmosphere, classic menu favorites, and their popular 21-item salad bar, they serve generations of Santa Maria families. Their impact goes beyond great food. Straw Hat Pizza is where youth teams celebrate, service clubs gather, and families become, come together. During the pandemic, they, they adapted quickly, shifting to takeout and delivery to safely serve customers. Owners Randy and Mary Wise and their team of 20 are deeply involved in our community, supporting nonprofits, schools, churches, service organizations, including Randy's active role in the Santa Maria Breakfast Rotary Club. Located at 1822 North Broadway, Straw Hat Pizza continues to be a place where community happens, one slice at a time. Please join me in congratulating Randy and Mary Wise and their entire team on this well-deserved recognition. Thank you for your service to Santa Maria.
Thank you, Michael, Madam Mayor, and city council members. What a tremendous honor to get this award. It just seems like yesterday, my wife, Mary, and I, we moved here from Bakersfield, 1984, didn't know a single person in town, and we bought the existing Straw Hat Pizza, which was in the Montgomery Ward Center. Some of, some of you remember that, and it's where Harbor Freight is right now. That used to be our original location, and that was opened in 1967. And so, we purchased that, and we had that unit for a long time, and then in 1996, North Broadway was being developed, so we opened up our second location, and we're in the Food Mac Shopping Center on North Broadway. And so, for a while there, we ran two, and so that was 96 to 2001, and then sadly, we had to close the first one, and since that time, we've had this one, and it's done great for us. We have a fantastic crew. We have great customers. We have, both our children were born here and raised here, and we now have four grandchildren. They all still live here, so we've been very fortunate, and I see a lot of your faces that come in, so if you get an urge for a good pizza, you come in and see us, okay? Thank you so much.
And I would, I would personally like to thank both of you because you've been so philanthropic in the way you give to the youth of our community, and I know through Rotary also, Randy, but thank you very much for being such a strong part of our community. Love it.
Yeah, and I, I want to thank you as well because I frequent your place a lot, as you can tell, and my father also loves that place, so our family goes there quite often, so I really want to thank you for the service that you provide to our community. Thank you.
So, the next item is a presentation from the Santa Maria Valley Chamber of Commerce by Michael Boyer, CEO of the Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you. I will be joined by two of my leadership team here, and, thank you. Mayor Patino, council members and staff, thank you for the opportunity to share highlights from the Santa Maria Valley Chamber's work over the last quarter. Our efforts are rooted in our core values. Get this going. Our efforts are rooted in our core values. We prioritize people, uphold accountability, foster respect, pursue excellence, model integrity, and believe deeply in collaboration. These guiding principles, these principles guide every, every program we lead, every decision we make. As you know, the Chamber doesn't just represent businesses and communities, we are a partner in building stronger Santa Maria Valley. Our mission is to foster a thriving, inclusive, and resilient community. We do this by connecting people, strengthening the economy, and helping businesses and residents succeed. Over the past months, our leadership team and our Board of Directors have worked to refine our mission and values. These guiding principles now serve as a foundation for all, for our internal alignment and external engagement. Here's our, our, our leadership team at the Santa Maria Chamber. All of these professionals here have been with the organization for over eight years each, some much longer. We have great experience bringing economic development and convening to the community. From January through March, we responded to four business attraction RFIs from Go, from California GoBiz, supporting nine prospective new businesses and providing assistance to 11 existing ones. We continue to advocate for, for the housing pipeline, which currently includes 7,400 housing units. We recognizing, we recognize that housing is economic development and essential to building and sustaining a stable workforce. The Chamber hosted more than 50 events and meetings this quarter, including key signature events such as the Housing Summit, State of Vandenberg, and our Business Expo and Job Fair. These gatherings bring, bring together leaders, elevate community dialogue, and connect job seekers with opportunities. Our membership continues to grow. We now represent more than 850 businesses and organizations. We maintain a 92% retention rate and engage, and engaged over 1,100 participants through our networking events in the last quarter. At this time, I would like to turn it over to Jennifer Harrison, our Vice President of Marketing and Communications, to share details about our upcoming tourist programs.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, City Manager. As we started the beginning of this calendar year, we really saw a bit of an increase in TOT and TMD assessments. From the fiscal year, beginning of fiscal year in July through December, we saw a little bit of softening, which I think is representative of the industry as a whole, not just in Santa Maria Valley, but at the state and national level as well. But coming into this calendar year in the first quarter, we really did see an incredible increase in TOT and TMD, which I think is indicative of a, not just a softening market, but more of a drive market, which is really where we speak to our audience and to our visitors and, and target in that Northern LA, South Bay area. And so, I think this is, is really indicative of those efforts, and we continue to see a little bit of an increase month over month. February was also up over last year, so we are pleasantly surprised and optimistic moving into our summer seasons, which typically are our peak opportunity to really bring in some new revenue into the city. So, the impact of our tourism efforts is really gauged off some of these publications that we put out into the drive markets that we target. One of those is our Santa Maria Valley Visitor Guide. This is our 2025 Guide, and we distributed 1,775 of those just in the first quarter alone. These are distributed through trade shows, through welcome bags to large groups that come into town, through our new visitor center at the Chamber Office, as well as Certified Folder and the Pismo Welcome Center. So, they are certainly in distribution and out there. We also give some to Visit California on different opportunities and allow them to distribute them for us as well. Additionally, we have our Santa Maria Valley brochure. We just did a reprint of this one, so we've just refreshed that and can be picked up at our visitor center as well. And this one, in addition to the placements with the visitor guide, are also placed at Certified Folder Rack displays in all of Northern LA County, the Bakersfield region, all the way up to Northern California, and again, in different California Welcome Centers and visitor guides as well, or, excuse me, welcome bags as well. We really use our website as a mechanism to gauge the engagement or how our marketing dollars are being received on the visitor side, and we drive a lot of that traffic to our website so that we can see the efforts and, and the results of those efforts. So, we had 140,000 website visits in the first quarter of this year, and we had 2,600 website hotel referrals. So, that's not just driving traffic to our landing page of hotels, it's then pushing them out to their sites and their booking engines, really giving us an idea of those that are following our marketing efforts to our website and then pursuing hotel rooms at the lodging sites. And so, that's a really good tool for us to gauge what's resonating. Sorry. In January, we also kicked off our Restaurant Month and Craft Cocktail Campaign. This is really an opportunity for us to build interest in a softer time of year. People tend to sort of hole up after the holidays and don't necessarily get out to restaurants and, and get back out into the community and start spending money again after the holidays. So, this is really an effort that started at the state level with Visit California. We adopted it back in probably 2010-ish, and we've been running a successful campaign ever since. In 2017, we expanded it to a month-long promotion and designed a craft cocktail contest, which was, is always a big hit. We had nine restaurant participants this month, this year, as well as five competitors in our craft cocktail contest. Our judges' choice went to Huckleberry's Breakfast and Lunch's Cocktail, their Gator Juice, which I heard was a hot item. The People's Choice Award went to Maya Mexican Restaurant for their classic original Michelada. So, we're, we're proud of that program. It's something that we run every year. We look forward to it. It gets a lot of our restaurants and attractions involved, and the community really rallies around some of our dining experiences here in the community. California Tourism Month kicked off in May, so we are celebrating that currently. We did press releases. We are doing marketing efforts around that as well to really promote all the things that there is to see and do, the wide-open spaces in Santa Maria Valley, the dining, the wine, the barbecue. May, coincidentally, is also National Barbecue Month, and so, we really capitalize on that since we are known for our barbecue. We promote a lot of events throughout the month of May, including the Barbecue Festival. We'll have West Coast Customs and the Cruises Nationals, as well as rodeo, and then this summer, we have additional events like the fair and Air Fest in the fall that we're looking forward to that really generate a lot of buzz around Santa Maria Valley as well. So, in addition to that, we're launching, or relaunching, I should say, our Show Us Your Key Card promotion. This was a big promo for us prior to COVID. The hotels encouraged their guests to go to participating establishments, show their hotel key card for special incentives and discounts, and that launched this month as well. We did it prior to COVID. We went dark on it for several years until it kind of could build its momentum and wineries weren't necessarily only taking reservations. And so, we've relaunched that again to much success. All of our local hotels are participating, as well as several wineries and restaurants and some coffee shops this time, so we're excited about that. Yeah, and with that, I will turn it in, turn it back over to Michael. Thank you.
Suzanne Singh, our Vice President of Economic Development and Government Affairs, is unable to join us tonight. However, her team continues to work closely with city staff in preparation for the upcoming ICSC Conference, where we will be meeting potential retail partners and shopping center landlords. To support these efforts, we created a professional Santa Maria-style prospect packet that integrates new data from our new partnership with Placer AI. Our Hispanic Business Alliance remains a vital part of our, of our work with 215 members and growing. I hope many of you were able to attend our recent Cinco de Mayo mixer, which welcomed over 250 attendees and celebrated a vibrant spirit of our business community. We're also collaborating with the Santa Maria Airport to support future development readiness efforts and the implementation of a new customs program, an initiative that positions Santa Maria for expanded global connectivity. Finally, our Vice President of Operations and Membership, Molly Alves, is leading our workforce development programs, and she'll take you through these.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the Council. Thank you again for having the Chamber here this evening. I'm going to speak a little about our workforce development programs and partnerships. It's a vital part of our economic development work, and so I'm going to touch a little on some of those that we've been working on the last few months, and then what's ahead. The Workforce Development Board is who I'm going to start with. They're a big partner of ours at the Chamber. Michael recently joined their Board of Directors. I am an active member of one of their committees that focuses on their Adults and Special Projects programs. And we have a number of different programs we run with them. One of them is their Build Your Workforce Program. This connects businesses to a lot of the funding and opportunities the Workforce Development Board has to hire, provide paid work experience, or upskill existing employees. There's a lot of funding and other incentives available that go kind of underutilized, and so we're trying to work to help connect businesses to those programs and opportunities. Additionally, we are working with them on a second chance hiring program for justice-involved individuals. That program ends in October, so we're wrapping that up right now with the Santa Barbara South Coast Chamber, partnering with them to encourage businesses to hire those who have been justice-involved. There's, again, a lot of programs and incentives out there to encourage employers to engage in those opportunities. Starting in July, we're going to be working on a program that focuses on women in STEM and manufacturing and highlighting those sort of career opportunities available here in the Santa Maria Valley. And that's going to be more of a public awareness campaign. We're going to do a number of industry tours for people and doing some profiles on women who work in those fields to really give some exposure to those opportunities for careers for those looking for employment or looking to change career paths. We also work with the Santa Barbara County Education Office very closely. We are in our third year of our Teacher Tours Program. Mayor, I know you've joined us a few times on these tours. We take high school CTE teachers around to different local businesses so they can build those relationships with those local businesses and take what they learn back to the classrooms to their students. This year, we had six tours, 17 businesses engaged, and over 60 teacher participants were a part of those. And it's a lot of fun. We'll be doing that again next year as well. This year was the first year we actually did a countywide tour out at Vandenberg Space Force Base. We brought about 30 teachers from across the county, spent the whole day out on base, and made a lot of really cool connections between the educators and the base and understanding what opportunities there are for students after they leave school and may want to get involved in jobs out there, so. Other partnerships we have with the County Education Office, Partners in Education is a big partner of ours. They work a lot with students on career readiness, resume building. They have a whole career readiness training program and a big internship program. They have about 30 to 40 students who are just waiting to be placed at a local business here in Santa Maria to take an internship. And so we've been really trying to encourage businesses to be a part of that program. We've had an intern in the past, and it's a great opportunity and a great experience. We actually have our mixer with them next Thursday out at the CTE Center, the Career Technical Education Center. And if you haven't been out there yet, I hope you all can join us for that. Our Next Gen CEO Program, another one we've done for a number of years. This program is geared towards about sixth-grade-level students and teaches them how to be their own boss and entrepreneurial skills. We, in the last year or so, have joined a partnership with the Boys and Girls Clubs on this program, and it's been a really exciting partnership for us. We currently have about 20 participants in this current session. We're working with the Railroad Club site along with the Evans Park Club site on that program and their business launch day. So throughout the program, they learn how to start their business, cost modeling, how to market their product, customer service, and actually get to create their own product and business plan and then sell to the public. And so that business, you know, launch day will be at the Railroad Club site on May 22nd, so we'll be sure to get you guys some information on that. It's a great opportunity to come out and support the students, see what products and businesses they've created. It's always really impressive what they come up with. And that program, too, we're looking to continue expanding. So we started with one Boys and Girls Club site, expanded to two, and we're looking at ways we can fund and grow even further throughout Santa Maria Valley and even beyond in the region, so. Finally, I wanted to give a shout out to the Rec Ready Program that we're partnering with the city on, that's kind of looking forward in the coming months. We're really excited about this program. It's designed to prepare students for careers in rec and hospitality through, again, internships, mentorships, and just hands-on training. And yeah, looking forward to partnering with the city on this. And yeah, I think that's all I've got for you guys. Thank you, guys, again, and we will now take questions.
Any questions from the Council? Ms. Aron?
I do. You mentioned that TOT tax revenue is showing higher, or not tax revenue, but TOT is showing higher. What would you attribute that to, aside from like more folks coming in and visiting the area? But is it like, is it springtime and people are just like, "Take me to wine country"?
Sorry, I kind of missed the beginning of the question. Are you talking about TOT from the beginning of the calendar year? Yeah, I think what we're seeing is people are hesitant to spend big money on flights. And what they're looking for are travel destinations that are both affordable and accessible by driving. A lot of the fly market you're starting to see really soften nationally and internationally. And so what used to be drive markets from LAX, people would fly into LAX and San Francisco, aren't necessarily happening as much. But what we're getting are residents from LA and San Francisco that are wanting drive destinations, and we fit that. You know, we scratch that itch for them, I guess, with wine country and beach access and, you know, the uncongested area.
That's so great. And then there was a segment in the presentation where you talked about some of the programs that are being offered, and one of those included, I think it was like a second chance workforce program for folks who have been system-impacted. And so I'm curious if, and I'm sorry if I missed it, but what kind of incentives do private businesses receive for participating in that program?
Yeah, so it's through funding that the Workforce Development Board offers. And so there are, if they want to bring on someone for a certain number of hours of paid work experience, the Workforce Development Board will cover those wages, and they will also cover all of kind of the HR and that side of things with the hope that the business would then hire on that individual. However, it's not a requirement. And so, yeah, we hold some info sessions that kind of cover all of those details of the program and how businesses could take advantage of that funding.
That's really great. Thank you.
I have a question. Ms. Aguilar Hernandez?
The Rec Ready Program, what is the age group of that? And is it just recreation and hospitality?
This was actually a program that was brought to us by Dennis at Rec and Parks, and it's a program that his department is putting together, and they're working directly with Hancock students. So I think in a perfect world, what we're trying to do is build a pipeline directly to hospitality and tourism and recreation-type positions, which are in this community. There's a lot of them. It's probably one of our biggest sectors, employment sector is hospitality, but we have no direct pathway in experience and building up that confidence. And so I think what we're doing is just really supporting Rec and Parks in doing this, since it's all kind of one big entity. And we're going to connect them with the hotels and make sure that they have access to any positions that they may be interested in putting interns at.
And this is for Hancock students?
These are for Hancock students, correct. They're actively in a program that mirrors kind of the work. So you'd look at like the Recreation and Parks programs, and the probably Culinary Arts would be one of them in hospitality.
And would they contact the city or contact you?
The city. It would go through Hancock. So they would show some interest, and then they would reach out to the Rec and Parks, and we would work as a liaison to help facilitate some of those conversations. And we're helping support and sponsor some of those students as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you very much. I'd like to say, if you haven't been to the Next Gen, the CEO Program, that is really, really exciting to see these young kids and parents making investments so that these kids can do something. And they're very enthusiastic. And when you go to wherever you do the display when they're selling their product.
Bring some money.
Yeah, they want to be able to pay for that investment that their parents put in. But it's really, really sort of interesting because they're having to interact with the public and figure out, you know, if that business is really going to be viable or not for them. So it's really, I think it's really, you just learn a lot about life skills in that. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
I think about Teresa Machado, because she was, in high school, I think, started doing recreation in the city of Santa Maria, and then she just kept doing it, kept doing it, and did a fantastic job in our rec program.
Awesome.
Thank you. So, you know, next, I would like to take a moment to recognize the extraordinary efforts of our Santa Barbara County firefighters and our Santa Maria, specifically our Santa Maria firefighters, that were answered the call for mutual aid in the devastating firefighters, fire fires down in Los Angeles this past January. 97 firefighters from eight departments across our county mobilized to assist in one of the most destructive fire emergencies in California history. Their bravery, skill, and sacrifice, along with the support of their families. And I think sometimes we don't really remember the sacrifices that families make, wives and the spouses, the families, the moms and dads, and the kids, because the kids are left without their moms or their dads in those cases. But they helped protect thousands of lives and homes. On behalf of the city of Santa Maria, we want to extend our thank yous and deepest gratitude and commend their unwavering commitment to service. Now, our Santa Maria firefighters sent down three agents and 12 personnel to the Palisades and Eaton fires. And we want to say, "thank you" sounds so minimal, but thank you, thank you so much, for all the council. Earlier this evening, we have many in law enforcement in their uniforms here, and I said, "We really feel safe." And now we see all of our firefighters. We feel super safe. But thank you very much. So the next item on the agenda is the public comment. Madam Kirk, are these all the public comments?
Yes, so far, there should be a total of seven.
Okay, seven, okay. So Matt Chirkop, I'll put you first. How's that?
Is it too late to say I'm not ready? Good evening, Mayor Patino, City Council, city staff, and members of the community. My name is Matthew Chirkop, President of the Santa Maria Firefighters. I want to first offer a thank you to those who were in attendance on April 26th for fallen firefighter William Alvin Newton's Remembrance Ceremony on the corner of Maiden Broadway. Your support for our fallen brother truly means a lot to us, to his family, and to his friends. Alvin's sacrifice for this community will not be forgotten. Next, I want to call your attention to those in the attendance today. If you look around the room, our families and friends made their way out this evening to show support for the city firefighters and to ask you for your support for Item 7A3. The successor MOU that is before you tonight will provide these families with a level of assurance and support that they desperately need. And for the firefighters themselves, this signifies a new path forward, one that recognizes our sacrifices and dedication to the community, as well as it will make the firefighting profession in Santa Maria competitive again. We strive to be the employer of choice, to make Santa Maria a great place to live and work. And this proposal will allow us to attract and retain high-quality firefighters and fire prevention inspectors. Thank you for your consideration on Item 7A3, and we ask you for your support. And most importantly, I want to thank the community for your continued support and praise. You have been here for us, and I want to reaffirm that our unwavering commitment to you is our highest priority. Thank you.
You still have over a minute left. Madam Mayor? Esther Jensen, followed by...
Did you want to know if we wanted to pull some of the items from the consent calendar, so we can take the comments?
Well, right now, we're in public comment.
Right, but some of them are regarding certain items that we want to pull. So I want...
Yeah, because this is just for public, yeah. Okay, Esther Jensen, followed by Jeffrey Wheeler, followed by Gary Hall, followed by Glenn Morris. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Jeffrey Wheeler?
Good evening, Mayor Patino and Council members. My name is Jeffrey Wheeler. I'm an active transportation advocate, and I want to begin by expressing sincere appreciation for the many ways our city staff work hard to keep our community safe and well-informed. Tonight, I speak in support of implementation of AB 413, the Daylighting Law, which came into effect in January 2024 and became finable this January. This law prohibits vehicles from parking within 20 feet of marked or unmarked crosswalks to improve visibility and reduce car collisions with pedestrians. It's simple, evidence-based, and effective. Studies show that it can reduce car crashes with pedestrians at intersections by nearly 9%. Cities like Hoboken, New Jersey, credit daylighting measures with seven years of zero-traffic fatalities. Here in Santa Maria, I've surveyed several intersections used by schoolchildren and notice vehicles, sometimes even crossing guard vehicles parked too close to crosswalks. None of the crossing guards I have spoken with were aware of the Daylighting Law. The benefit of this law was brought home to me recently when I was riding my bike on Pine Street and stopped at Park Street. I was about to start across the intersection when I heard a car. Not seeing where it was coming from, I hesitated. A car parked too close to the corner had blocked my vision and the car driver's vision. I was fortunate that it was not a quiet electric car. The Santa Maria community needs to know about daylighting parking restrictions. Over the past year, I've spoken to the Traffic Committee several times and written public works, the Police Department, and Code Enforcement, advocating for proactive implementation. Thus far, I have not seen public education efforts or clear implementation steps. This doesn't need to be resource-intensive. Cities like Davis have shown that low-cost treatments like paint, bollards, planters, bike racks, or even art can act as natural, self-enforcing barriers without major loss of parking. I know our city staff have many competing priorities, and I respect how much they already do. That's why I'm asking you, as council, to provide direction to staff, to initiate education and outreach, to identify city champions, and to take visible steps at implementation. A short city public service announcement video, a few pilot locations, and outreach to schools could go a long way in helping people understand the law and embrace its benefits. Thank you again for your leadership and your service to our city. I'm confident Santa Maria can become a model for effective implementation of this lifesaving law.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wheeler. That's really important. Thank you. Gary Hall, followed by Glenn Morris, followed by Carol Paul.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council members, staff, and citizens of Santa Maria. My name is Gary Hall. I am a resident of Rancho Buena Vista Mobile Estates at 2135 North Railroad Avenue here in Santa Maria. in Santa Maria. I represent the North Santa Barbara County Manufactured Homeowners Team, or NESBIT. I have not yet heard of this council's willingness to add either senior mobile home park conversion prevention or mobile home rent stabilization to a future meeting's agenda, so I'm back again tonight, pleading for you to take that appropriate and overdue action. Santa Maria seniors deserve the same protection from conversion that has been provided to the seniors in the unincorporated Santa Maria, Santa Barbara County. Last November, the Board of Supervisors passed an interim urgency ordinance to implement a moratorium for the conversion of senior mobile home parks to all-age mobile home parks. Tomorrow, the County Planning Commission holds a hearing to consider the proposed permanent senior mobile home park overlay ordinance. In a similar action, I believe Santa Maria could also revise existing Title 12 zoning ordinances and add the overlay provision. This would protect Santa Maria senior mobile home park residents from the kind of action attempted by the owner and manager of the El Cielo Senior Park in Orkin. Now, a new subject? No, an old subject. Nearly three years ago, this council passed a motion with the intention of improving the 2020 model lease or replacing it. An outreach effort was made without any evidence of mobile home resident benefit. The mobile home residents of Santa Maria continue to struggle. In November 2019, the model lease and enforcement agreement with all their flaws were approved over our objections. The improvements we asked for were not incorporated. All we ever wanted was to be treated like those mobile home residents in unincorporated Santa Barbara County, to be treated like the mobile home residents in local area cities like Lompoc, and Goleta, and Morro Bay, and Pismo Beach, and Oxnard, and Santa Paula, and even San Luis Obispo, and Santa Barbara. Those jurisdictions listened to the residents and provided the rent stabilization protection they deserved, like we deserve. Please bring mobile home rent stabilization back to the agenda. Final comment, I am hopeful that you will demonstrate compromise and approve the successor MOU with our firefighters. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Glenn Morris, followed by Carol Paul, followed by Eric Daniels.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. I'm here this evening as a representative of the Board of Directors of REACH, our Regional Economic Development Partnership, of which the city of Santa Maria was one of the early adopters and signatories. Sometimes I think we wonder whether the investments we make in economic development matter. It can be a long game. But tonight, I want to share with you a recent win that was announced that will bring jobs and investment to the region and to our community. Last week, the U.S. Space Force awarded $77.5 million to a company called Astrotech to build new satellite processing facilities at Vandenberg Space Force Base. These facilities will enable satellite and launch providers to expand operations on the central coast, unlocking more jobs, more innovation, and more long-term economic opportunities for our region, our citizens, and our families. It's important to note that much of that work that they will now be able to do here is being done in Los Angeles and other places, and then the satellites are barged or trucked to the base to be, you know, connected to the rockets for launch. On behalf of REACH, we want to express our appreciation for our longstanding partners at Vandenberg Space Force Base, whose leadership and collaboration since 2019 have been foundational to this effort. We're also especially grateful to the Santa Maria Valley Chamber and the city of Santa Maria, who were early champions of this Vandenberg partnership and regional opportunity. So, Mayor, just thought every now and then it's nice to share good news and show that ROI on that long-term investment that the city, the chamber, and our community have made in creating jobs and economic opportunity for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. That's really important, because we know you guys are out there working, and all of a sudden, it sort of comes to fruition, everything that everyone's doing and pulling together. But thank you very much, Mr. Morris. Carol Paul, followed by Eric Daniels. Good evening, Ms. Paul.
Good evening. My name's Carol Paul, and I'm here representing myself. Government was established for the protection of the citizens, and that protection includes fire departments. And I am unschooled in the history of the Santa Maria Fire Department funding, but I am assured that the Fire Department lacks fair funding from its frontline employees, or at least it has in the past. It concerns me that finding fair support for them should be an urgent issue for the council, but I continue to see a sign on Miller Street that says, that's promoting fair pay. I also drive around the city and see lots of municipal buses. Perhaps the bus service was well-used in prior years, and I drive with somebody else in my car, and that copilot has started monitoring how many riders he can see on the buses we pass. I don't know if he's ever reported two passengers on one bus. More often, more often than one passenger, he sees no passengers. The benefit is, seems more to the city employees and a few passengers. Additionally, transportation is not a primary purpose of government. Keeping in mind the terrible mismanagement exposed by the recent fires in Los Angeles and Ventura Counties, and our continued need for first responders in our homes when we have medical emergencies, I think it's imperative that the Santa Maria Fire Department be as well-funded as needed to ensure the health and safety of the whole city. So my suggestion is this, that the council look into drastic revamping the city bus service and apply any funds that might be available from that toward the Fire Department for the protection of all the city's residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Paul. Good evening, Mr. Daniels.
Hello, Madam Mayor, council. How are you? I didn't realize we were on consent, but now I do. While PG&E is supportive of the public policy goals, public safety goals that you have...
Did you want to speak on an item that's on consent calendar?
Yes, it is on, it's at 7B1. I didn't realize it was on consent. While we're supportive of the public safety goals, we do have some concerns with the proposal on 7B1. As stated in my comments to the council last time I was here and to follow up with the city staff that I met with, regulations and sightings of electric utility operations by local entities are preempted by the California Public Utilities Commission. Under the California Constitution, a city or county may not regulate matters over which the legislature has granted regulatory power to the PUC. The Public Utilities Code grants the PUC broad authority to regulate construction and operation of infrastructure, utility infrastructure, and the PUC's General Order Number 131E, which governs permitting and utility electric projects. The CPUC confirms that local jurisdictions acting pursuant to local authority are preempted from regulating electric facilities constructed by utility, public utilities, subject to the commission's jurisdiction. In addition, numerous court cases and CPUC CEQA documents have found that local zoning conditional use permit requirements and other local discretionary land use controls do not apply to utility projects. As such, PG&E does not apply for local discretionary permits for electric projects, including battery storage projects. That is, if we were even going to have one in Santa Maria, which at present, we are not proposing to do so. I just want to make that clear. But with that, I just want to say, I met with the staff, we had a really constructive conversation, and I appreciate it, and we would prefer to continue to work properly with the city. However, where local agency and the utilities are unable to resolve differences, the PUC will resolve the dispute. With that, I want to thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daniels. Okay. That concludes our public comment.
Madam Mayor, if I can just announce, we did receive a public comment from Scott Murdisaw regarding 7B1 as well, and that'll be posted tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to clarify, we're on item number six, which is public comment. We're not on consent calendar yet. I just want to clarify.
No, I know, but people can speak at the public comment or the consent calendar.
Correct, but that's why I was asking Eric, because he wanted to speak on the consent calendar. Yes, I just want to clarify, there were two comments that were made that were regarding the consent calendar.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Ms., thank you, Eric. So now we'll move to the consent calendar. Does anyone have items they wish to pull for discussion?
Yes.
Yeah. Councilmember Soto.
Item 7A3.
A3, okay.
For a separate vote.
And I would like to pull 7B1, which is the comment, and... 7E8.
7E8?
Yes.
Okay.
Eight? No.
Oh, okay.
The pedestrian?
Yes, the pedestrian. Okay, and 7B1, which is the energy, battery energy storage system.
7B1.
Are those both for separate vote or discussion?
Yes.
Discussion and separate vote.
Discussion and separate vote, okay.
Okay, so can I get a motion for the rest of the consent?
I move that we approve the rest of the consent calendar?
Other than that 7A3, 7E8, and 7B1. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
A second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar with the exception of 7A3, 7E8, and 7B1. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Mayor Potem Escobedo. Councilmember Flores?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Mayor Patino?
Aye. Okay, so 7A3, Ms. Soto.
I just wanted to pull it for a separate vote, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Do you want me to read it?
Please.
Adoption of resolutions to approve and ratify the successor memorandum of understanding with Santa Maria Firefighters Union Local Number 2020 and approving the city's comprehensive schematic pay schedule.
Thank you. Do you want to make a motion?
I so move.
Okay.
Second. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Escobedo.
Thank you, just want to make a comment. We're living into a $20 million deficit in the city of Santa Maria, and now with this, we're adding $1.3 million more to it. So I just want to put that in the record.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Flores?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Escobedo?
No.
And Mayor Patino?
Aye.
7...
This is an adoption of an ordinance, number 202501, amending Title 12 of the city of Santa Maria Municipal Code, adding new definition for battery energy storage systems.
Okay, well, I have questions for staff. Good evening. So last time we were here, this came up.
Yes.
And so I wanted to clarify, what is it that we're doing as a city, and what is the problem we're trying to address so that the public understands?
Yes, the concern that was expressed was in response to the Moss Landing fire and a number of other fires with traditional battery energy storage systems that have not only caught fire but produced toxic plumes of smoke, have required the evacuation of nearby homes and businesses. The one in Moss Landing was very large, and it did require the closure of Highway One as well, and the evacuation of the residents in the area for 24 hours. So the concerns that were expressed as we shaped this ordinance were along the lines of, let's make sure this doesn't happen in Santa Maria. So this really was safety-driven. The way we shaped it was based on the effects of those other fires that have occurred to date, but I do want to draw attention to that this technology does continue to evolve. So what caught fire there was 2020 technology. It will continue to get better in the future, so we are hopeful that future iterations of this technology will have that assurance of safety for our residents, and at that time, hopefully, we can revisit this.
Thank you. Councilmember Flores?
So in San Diego, that's my hometown, they had a fire. They had firewalls, sprinklers, they did everything. And that fire lasted a very long time. So I have a lot of concerns for our city with placing them here in our city. So I think we need to really do an effective job. I'm not saying that you're not, but I think we need to really do some studies on what we can do, because they're very explosive, and then the fumes, and then we have our city, and then we have people, and then we have elderly, and then we have those that are sick. And I've seen what it did in San Diego, and with all that they did to prevent it, it still exploded. So those are some of my concerns as of today, putting those batteries here in our city.
Absolutely. And with the, both the parameters that staff proposed and the additional parameters that the Planning Commission proposed and that were integrated into the proposal before you, it does actually, it's not a moratorium, that was not the intent, but there are no viable sites on which you could put these best systems currently in the city of Santa Maria. So under these parameters, the only possibility is that if we were to do an annexation and the zoning reflected sufficient distance from the sensitive receptors we identified, schools, homes, agriculture, then maybe there would be an opportunity to put that there. And as we did meet with PG&E and had a really constructive conversation around that we, from a planning standpoint, if we wanted to integrate that in the future, when the technology is safe enough for everyone to be comfortable with that, they would need to be located appropriately to transmission and distribution lines in order to be viable sites for the energy side. That said, again, as Mr. Daniels noted, there are no pending PG&E applications, so PG&E does not have any current plans in this area. Sure.
But we did have an application for a battery storage.
Yes, so we do have an application that was submitted a couple of years ago, and they just recently asked for a renewal. So that's going to be going to Planning Commission shortly. That one, it is the same technology as Moss Landing. It is a 10-megawatt facility. The one in Moss Landing is several hundred megawatts, so the scope and scale are very different. The other factor in that one is that it is an M1 zoning, where the ordinance would propose M2 zoning, so that's basically light versus heavy industrial. But aside from being light industrially zoned as opposed to heavy industrially zoned, it does meet all the other parameters that are in the current ordinance before you.
And will that be at a study session, or will that just be at the Planning Commission?
You know, I'll need to check on that and get back to you.
Okay, fine.
Yes.
I'd like, just, I'd like to just know. Thank you, Shannon.
Absolutely.
Yes, Escobedo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, actually, I have a question regarding the, is with the 3CE, the application, the application that...
I believe it was a third-party entity, but the off-taker, we were looking to identify, and we're not able to identify that before this meeting, who the off-taker is.
Yeah, I had a conversation with Mr. Chung, and we talked earlier about there's some project going on. I don't know if you would like to say, to talk a little bit about it, Mr. Wu?
Pass you.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Escobedo, so the project that Ms. Dow referenced, that was previously approved, so they couldn't verify that that's associated with something that's with 3CE, but in my prior conversations with 3CE, that there could be that possibility, but it's not yet confirmed.
Okay, and you mentioned that they have a permit already, and they want to renew it, and do, and now the next step would be to, you know, to issue a building. So this new ordinance that we would be voting, well, we already voted, but now we, this is a second reading. is a second reading, would this apply to these, or in, this application that was already submitted before?
No, because this was previously submitted and was approved under the zoning in place at that time, this current ordinance would not retroactively nullify that permit that was previously issued. There are some requirements that they need to show us in order to be eligible for that renewal, and our staff is going back and forth with them now to make sure they have shown that due diligence, that they have been progressing in the interim and have not just let it lie and are just extending because they see this happening. And that was one of the things that our staff did ask for, was, you know, power purchase agreement, something like that, that would identify who is the off-taker, what does that power purchase length of time look like. And there were some concerns as far as, you know, confidentiality and things like that. So that's, that's what the current status, and we'll have those documents, though, for the Planning Commission when it goes before them.
Do we have a potential timeline on, you know, because they have a deadline for any extension that they might request?
Yes, they'll be going, I believe it's within the next 60 days, to the Planning Commission, so that is coming soon, and we're preparing for that.
Okay, thank you.
To clarify...
Thank you.
Apologies. To clarify, this, the adoption of this ordinance would not necessarily ban these new energy storage facilities, it would just regulate where they would be.
Correct. So the end effect is that there is no current vacant site that is zoned appropriately in the city limits that would allow one. So there would be no sites available. It does not retroactively nullify the one that had already been approved, and it wouldn't necessarily apply, or wouldn't necessarily prevent any opportunities to do it in any future annexation areas.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No.
Okay. Let's move on to 7...
Do we vote on, it was pulled for a vote?
Yeah. Okay. Do you want to, do you want to vote on that now, or do 7E8?
Well, I'll move.
Okay, second.
Oh, sorry.
Two.
To approve the language.
Second.
To approve the language.
Move. Second.
Second by Aguilar Hernandez, and first by Escobedo.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing nun, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mayor Portem Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Flores?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
And Mayor Patino?
Aye. Motion carried. Okay, 7E8?
Yes.
7E8.
Okay.
Adoption of resolution prohibiting pedestrians and bicyclists on Broadway, State Route 135, northeast of intersection with Presker Lane.
My question was for staff regarding the resolution, or the, I guess, what is that, what is it that we're trying to accomplish, and is there still going to be room for cyclists and pedestrians to get to the park? So there's continuity to, to reach the park.
Certainly, on Presker Lane, so the reason for the project is the Chick-fil-A development, there's going to be some traffic impacts associated with that, and as people exit 101 onto southbound Broadway, from southbound 101, they're going to be adding a right-hand turn signal there and doing some work on that to make that operate a little bit better. And Caltrans doesn't want pedestrians or bikes on that. And in order for them to get an encroachment permit to do that work, they need to prohibit pedestrians and cyclists in that area. We are working on the design for the new interchange, which we expect to be under construction by roughly 2030, and this is kind of a stopgap measure to just try to make that a safe operating environment until we build the new interchange, which will fully accommodate new pedestrians, or pedestrians and bicyclists. On the Presker Lane question, there's a plan to actually create and extend the sidewalk to turn that into a, essentially a cycle track that's off-road, so it'll be off the current road to the west. So that'll run all the way north to Hidden Pines, so there will be better access than we currently have on Presker Lane. So you will remove the bikes from the roadway as it currently exists, move them onto a cycle track, and have a much better exclusive environment for both cars and bicyclists to get to the park.
Okay. The current memo does say that, the staff says, the staff notes is that bicycle pedestrian access is expected to be restored. Is it going to be expected, or it will be restored?
It will be restored with the new interchange.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, if you come down there, if you're coming off of 135 and onto the Broadway, it is so dangerous. I mean, you're, you know, you just, you know, say your Hail Marys and your Our Fathers and hope that you, that nobody hits you when you're coming onto Broadway.
Yeah, it'll be a completely, it's a high priority of Caltrans as we go through the design of this project to make sure that we have vehicle or pedestrian bicycle access to the levee from there. So it's a, it's going to be a big point of focus for everybody.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, because traffic is really bad at 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m., so you're going to add the Chick-fil-A traffic. Thankfully, Sundays are closed, so it'll be okay on Sundays, but the rest of the week, it's going to be really crowded there, and so I agree with the mayor that we want to make sure that pedestrians and cyclists are going to have room to get around, to get across, to get to the levee, to get to the park.
Yes. Once we move forward with that interchange, probably be done in about 10 years.
Okay.
Overnight.
That's fast for government. We're going to hold you to the 10 years, Mr. Fullgumey. Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, actually, we had a conversation about these items a long time ago. Yeah, I think one of the biggest challenges with your department, Brad, is that it takes time. You know, all these, these regulations that you need to follow, I've seen the map, it's, I'm really excited about this one because, you know, it will benefit not just the riders, the bikers, and the pedestrians, because now they're going to be actually protected because they're going to be on the sidewalk instead of being, you know, next to a...
The sidewalk, not the sidewalk, but yes.
Well, the trail, and...
Big difference.
And also the entrance to the community that is right there on Presker Lane, that usually, I used to live on, next to Tommy Kuntz, and you would always have somebody stopping to get into the community, and it was just constant danger. Like, somebody is going to hit me. You were, like, really pressured by all this traffic that was coming from the freeway. And I think that this is, this is going to help a lot and benefit a lot of the community, especially in the northwest part of Santa Maria. So looking forward to have this moving forward and see a completion, hopefully before 10 years, which is maybe impossible, Mayor. But thank you.
You asked, Mr. Fullgumey knows, this is the roads guy, so he'll know what to do.
He said 10 years.
Okay.
It's in YouTube now.
So do you have a motion?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing nun, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mayor Portem Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Flores?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
And Mayor Patino?
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we will proceed to item number eight.
Do we have anybody from the super?
Do we?
Yeah.
Yep. Three people. So we'll move on to the public hearing portion of the agenda, and the next public hearing is on the former Sears Building. This public hearing will be presented by Director of Community Development, Shannon
Madam Mayor, city council members, I am so excited to share with you tonight one of the first projects that will be in our downtown revitalization efforts. We truly believe this project will serve as a catalyst as we see the renaissance of our downtown area. The location is the former Sears Building that has sat vacant for approximately five years, and it has been a source of blight for our community. We are very excited to see it fill up. It's located, of course, in our downtown specific plan area within the Town Center District. And here's a view of the existing building from Miller Street, and from Main, and southeast. As you can see, some improvement is needed, and we are looking forward to providing it. This is our applicant. This is the existing site plan, which demonstrates the circulation on the site, the parking that's available there. And this is the proposed site. It is a 4.5, 5.4-acre site and over 110,000 square feet of retail that will be remodeled. That includes the northwest and east facades, and it will have El Super as a grocery store tenant on the bottom floor. The entry that is currently a stairwell from the first floor to the second will be sealed up, and that second floor will serve as two different large tenant spaces on the top. In addition, the former garage base from the tire center will be transformed into approximately 800 square feet retail spaces for different storefronts. Along the front of that, we'll see a promenade and outdoor dining space that can serve as a gathering space and really create some synergy and some vibrancy in our downtown. This shows the grocery store and the layout that we'll see inside there. They are going to have hot food inside and a restaurant component with seating there. And here's the second floor that demonstrates that it'll be, there will be a partition wall going through the center of it, and each space is about 23,000 square feet. These are the elevations, so you can see the significant transformation, and we want to thank the Charles Company for working with our planners and with our Planning Commission to integrate their comments and really get to a high-level design that is going to be a great addition to the Santa Maria downtown area. Here's additional views of this. We expect to see signage that will add to the vibrancy and lots more pedestrian activity. This reflects the colors and materials that will be integrated. We'll see some differences in upgrades in landscape and trees, they'll be adding about 60 trees to the area. And this, they have worked with the Parks and Rec Department to identify what trees might be sick and need to be removed, and what varieties of trees will be best to integrate. This shows the landscape plans that they'll be constructing as part of the project. Environmental has already been taken care of through the downtown specific plan, so this is fairly straightforward in that regard. And finally, we are approving, recommending approval for this downtown permit. As part of this, there will be an ABC permit for the grocery store component. That is a very small percentage of their overall sales, and we've worked with the police department to ensure that there won't be any, you know, undue circumstances that will be caused by that. And in addition, the Planning Commission is recommending an incentive for this project in that the two tenant spaces on the second floor would be approved directly by the Planning Commission in the future, when Charles Company is ready to bring those forward. So we recommend approval, and I'm here for any questions or concerns.
Any questions?
I do.
Yes, Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Regarding the type 21 alcohol, is that just for sale, or there going to be any inside consumption?
It will be solely for sale and consumption off-site.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay.
I want to thank staff for the thorough presentation, and also, they did have a presentation for the Downtown Committee, which Gloria Soto and I sat on, and so, you know, I received all the information that I needed to make a decision tonight. Thank you.
Excellent.
I'll open up the public hearing. Are there any requests to speak, Madam Clerk? Or written comments?
About 4:57 this evening, we did receive via email a letter of support from the applicant's attorney, Alyssa, Alicia Bartley. We did email that to you, but of course, it would have been too late for you to review. You will have it in your email, and we will post it tomorrow morning.
Okay. And no requests to speak? Are you good? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Mariano Withers, and I'm the Director of Development and Entitlements for the company. And we're thrilled to be part of the Santa Maria community. This is long coming. We've been working very closely with all your staff. They've been fantastic. I'm sad to see that Carol's not here today, and Dana, but they've been wonderful. And Shanine's been a great addition to your staff, as well as Mr. Wu. I'd like to introduce our team. Marvin Jarman, he's our project manager and our boots on the ground. Many of you already know him. And we have Pablo Garcia, who's our project architect, and Jean DeTremonti, who's our leasing director. And we also have our tenant here, and if you'd like to come up and say a few words, that'd be great, so that way you get to know who's going to be here in your community. But we're thrilled to have El Super, and we're here for you for anything you need. Thank you, council members, for your guidance at the downtown meeting. That was very helpful. It's really great when you see that everybody, you know, rolls up their sleeves and gets involved. It just makes the entire project a lot better, and thank you. We're very excited to see the ribbon cutting, and we have a brand-new, beautiful place that everybody can come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm David Donovich, I'm Vice President of Construction. I'm really here to answer any questions that you guys have, but we're very excited to have the opportunity to build a store and open a store here and be part of this community. We've been looking at this community for quite some time, and thank you to this group here that found this building and gave us the opportunity to be here. So if you have any questions, I can answer anything.
What other locations do you have?
So we operate three banners. We operate El Super, which is primarily California, Arizona, Nevada. We have 69 other locations. We operate in Texas under Fiesta Mart, and we also operate here in California, Nevada, Arizona, under Smart and Final banner.
What are the locations in California?
Majority of the locations in California, we go all the way up to, I'm on my way tonight to Fresno, because we're doing a construction on a Sears building in Fresno. We have one in Fresno already, we have up here in Salinas, we're all through San Diego, L.A. proper, Cedar Chavez East L.A., City of Commerce, all throughout California, into the desert, NDO area.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Escobedo?
Yeah, I have a question. It was mentioned that there are going to be other areas that you guys are trying to bring more different businesses, like second floor and maybe some, in some areas. Do you have a, or I don't know if you can share that information, do you have any leads on what might be coming to that area?
Well, our leasing staff, especially Jean and Marvin, they've been very active in recruiting new tenants. We don't have any that we can disclose yet, because obviously, if you make it known, we don't want, we don't want them to go somewhere else, especially a neighboring community. We want to make sure that they stay here in Santa Maria. So as they come forth, we will vet them, and as you could see, it's a beautiful building, especially that second floor, and that was the brainchild of Marvin and our architect to really activate the space. I believe that this is a showpiece that you may want to submit for awards in regards to how to revitalize a mall. You know, we have so many in Southern California and big-box tenants that you really got to, no pun intended, think outside the box and figure out what you do, because they're beautiful buildings, they're, you know, built well, but they just, you know, their use, it comes to a point where you have to reinvent them. So I think this is going to be one of those, this is going to be a catalyst and a showpiece.
Definitely, and I hope, you know, that's absolutely the hope, and I might ask you this, because I'm pretty sure somebody is going to reach out to us and ask you, like, what's, because I was asked before...
Yes.
What is coming to Sears? What is coming to Sears? Like, I cannot disclose that information, Jim.
Well, now you can let them know that El Super is going to be our anchor, and they're going to be here, and if you have any tenants that, you know, they approach your staff or come to the city, we'll be more than happy to talk to them and vet them out, make sure that they're a right fit for, you know, the downtown mall.
And I'll add, too, that Madam Mayor, Mr. Wu and I will be going to ICSC in a couple of weeks here, and this is one of the sites that we will be pitching to prospective retailers.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
And we invite you, council members, it's always great, especially for the tenants and staff, to meet, so that way they know that you're interested in having them in your city, and then also, it's great for us to meet with you. We hope that we can meet with your staff onsite, so that we can refine our schedules. You know, timing is everything. That's, timing, time kills deals. So the most important thing is that when we get a tenant to be... So the most important thing is that when we get a tenant to be able to process it quickly, and, you know, I was very impressed with your planning commission, because they were able to do back-to-back meetings so that we could achieve the goal of getting them open on their timeline. So, yeah, we hope we get to see everybody there. Thank you.
This is, it's really nice. I really like the outdoor. I know we've had people, if they, if they're not around Santa Maria, they don't realize we have these balmy breezes that come through periodically, and, and there's sometimes people put up a business, and they don't realize the open air promenade there can be subject to those winds that come through, but this blocks it, so this is going to be really nice.
You get the benefit of the breeze, but, you know, you're not going to be blown off the balcony.
Or have your food blown off, right? Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
None?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, I will close the public hearing. Go ahead.
A move that we approve.
A second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Aguilera Hernandez?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Flores?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto? And Mayor Patino?
Aye. The next public hearing item will be on the Santa Maria workforce vacancies, recruitment, and retention efforts. The Director of Human Services, Graciela Reynoso, will be making that presentation.
Congratulations.
Welcome, we'll be seeing you.
Welcome to our beautiful city.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members, for the opportunity to talk with you today about our workforce vacancies, recruitment, and retention efforts. My name is Graciela Reynoso. I'm the Chief Human Resources Officer for the city, and I'll be presenting today in compliance with Assembly Bill 2561, which was crafted into law beginning of January. So Assembly Bill 2561 requires public agencies to hold a public hearing regarding the status of job vacancies and our recruitment and retention efforts on an annual basis. This is our first report as such. It must be presented to the governing body prior to budget adoption, and it must provide an opportunity for recognized bargaining groups to present before council, and I believe we do have someone from our bargaining units to present today. The purpose of the Assembly Bill is really to, oops, to increase employment transparency and to speak about operations and assure that we are appropriately staffed for the work that we do for, for the community. Our city workforce is a large workforce, and it is a complex workforce. We cover a lot of different staffing requirements for the city across the departments. You'll see here that we have an overall budgeted FTE count of 738.4 positions, and we do have 118 limited service, active limited service employees. So we are a large organization within the community, providing employment opportunities to the community. Our employee groups are listed here. We have a variety of groups that are represented and nonrepresented, and you can see them here, and you've been familiar, obviously, throughout, even today, we've heard about a number of activities that have gone on in the employment realm with these groups. When we look at the vacancy rate within the labor groups, you'll see that the overall vacancy rate for the city is 13%, and it's broken out in the slide where an important thing to notice as well, an important factor in our employment, is that many of these groups have different various sizes. So some of the, some of the groups are maybe 10 people, and some, our largest group is SEIU with 373-plus people, employees in that unit. The overall percentage, again, for vacancy at this time, when we took the data, which was at the end of 2024, was 13%. And none of our represented groups faced a vacancy rate of greater than 20%, which is another marker that the legislation then triggers additional scrutiny into our data. So our citywide recruitment efforts are complex, and they're partnerships with departments to ensure that we are staffing city, the city departments appropriately, and that we are providing opportunities for employees to move within the organization and community members to join the organization. In 2024, we conducted 95 recruitments, receiving a total of 3,144 applications for those recruitments, and through a variety of either bringing new employees onboard or transfers and rehires and promotions, there were 280, 90 vacancies filled across the year. Within the promotional numbers, that resulted in 33% promotional opportunities for our employees, which is a very good number, which means, I think, is reflective on the organization that we are growing our own through many of our engagement and training efforts with the city. So our recruitment and retention efforts, we are competitive in the recruitment realm, so when we are making an offer, we come in with competitive offers to employees to ensure that we can offer what the market would offer and what people are expecting when they are joining a new organization. Our benefits are one of the drawing factors, and as of approving the successor MOU today, all of our units receive comparable benefits for health purposes for themselves and their family. So we are strategic in our outreach. We partner with many organizations to get the word out there. When necessary, we do hire recruitment firms for some positions, and I think, as evidenced today as well, we do, we did welcome two new leaders into the organization to do the important work of the city. We believe in career progression, so we do take very tangible efforts to ensure that our employees are afforded the training opportunities, coaching opportunities, to be able to move into the next level at the city. And as was on consent, we have recently partnered with an organization to look and take a comprehensive view of our entire classification and compensation system, and we are kicking that off this month, so there will be announcements made to the city employees to come to an orientation, to hear about what the classification and compensation study will entail. And I think that that, with our continued efforts of continuously looking to align our positions, the classification and compensation study will be really helpful in just kind of demonstrating where we are in the market and what we can do to continue to be competitive. So that is what I have for you today as far as our vacancy and our, the ways that we are looking to secure top talent and to be able to be competitive in the market and draw talent. And now we can hear from Nicole from SEIU.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and distinguished council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Nicole Bryant, and I serve as the Labor Representative for SEIU Local 620, and it is my privilege to represent the dedicated public servants who make up half of the city's workforce across nearly every department. I'd like to begin by congratulating the city and our brothers and sisters of Local 2020 on the successful ratification of their collective bargaining agreement this evening. It's a moment worth celebrating. I would also like to express our appreciation to the council for proclamations representing Toastmasters International District 33 Day, in which many of our members participate, Municipal Clerks Week, National Police Week, and National Public Works Week this month, recognizing the service of our members and public servants as a whole. It's particularly poignant that we gather this evening to discuss vacancies in the public sector workforce as, and a reminder of even that with these progress challenges remain. As this is the inaugural vacancy hearing following the passage of Assembly Bill 2561, I would like to provide some context. AB 2561 seeks to address growing concerns surrounding longstanding vacant positions in the public sector within our state. Such vacancies can result in diminished services to the community, increased workloads for incumbent staff, difficulty in maintaining operational efficiency, and a rising tendency to contract out public sector work. When labor is contracted out, public oversight, transparency, and accountability diminish, and profits are drawn from taxpayer dollars rather than reinvested in the workforce in our community. Longstanding public sector vacancies also create situations where public funds that the city council approved remain unspent within the budget and are inadvertently diverted away from the city's workforce. Public sector workers are the foundation of our communities, performing essential work that our neighbors rely on every single day. Currently, SEIU's vacancy rate sits at 14%, and citywide, the rate is 13%, just below the 20% Assembly Bill threshold for increasing reporting requirements. Those numbers may not trigger additional reporting, but they are nonetheless troubling and call for our collective attention and sustained action. This is an overall improvement from the 161 citywide vacancies reported to SEIU during contract negotiations in November of 2023. At that time, we were told positions were not being held vacant for salary savings. However, the data provided through this year's hearing process paints a different picture. What's most concerning is that 20 of SEIU's 52.2 vacancies have been vacant for more than a year, with some sitting unfilled for four, five, even one as long as 10 years, creating potentially inflated budget concerns. These longstanding vacancies are not just numbers on a spreadsheet. They represent essential public servants, services delayed, and colleagues burdened under ever-increasing workloads. Let me be clear, the work is still getting done. The city continues to grow and develop, but the cost is being paid by existing staff, employees who feel overwhelmed over work and too often undervalued. I would like to note that the 290 recruitments that occurred in 2024 mentioned during today's hearing, while critical and noteworthy to recognize the full extent of recruitments Human Resources took on, nearly a third, 89 of those positions are limited service or hourly roles, which do not alleviate the bargaining unit vacancies. While they are very much needed within our city for limited service purposes, such as lifeguards and recreation leaders, just to name two, they are not sufficient replacements for fully funded, full-time positions. Our intent in presenting this evening is not to harp on the negativity and blame of the situation. We're here because we believe in accountability, transparency, and partnership. SEIU Local 620's slogan is stronger together, and that includes partnering with representatives and administrations we often find sitting across from us at the bargaining table. We support shared solutions, like the city's investment in the digital ERP system that the city is being brought into the 21st century, an effort SEIU has long since championed. This tool will improve transparency, allow better access to staffing data, and increase efficiency in pursuing recruitments. As for competitive pay programs, the salary reviews, the city has struggled for years to make meaningful equity adjustments. Progress in this area is a recent occurrence over the last year, but the city is still significantly behind. Through the annual equity adjustment language negotiated in our contract, we were able to achieve appropriate market adjustments for five of our classification series last year. The vacancy reports shared tonight support the argument that continue, to continue this practice. Nine of SEIU's positions filled since December 27th were in positions that received those marketing, market equity adjustments last year. We thank the council for hearing our pleas and pursuing the class and compensation study. However, realistically, the study's results are over a year away, and progress in equity needs to continue simultaneously during that timeframe, especially for SEIU, where we individually represent 123 different full-time and part-time job classifications out of the city's 243 total. We would like to encourage city administration to pursue shared recruitments specifically for SEIU classifications that are present in multiple departments when they occur. When a maintenance worker recruitment goes out for utilities, please utilize the eligibility lists created to fill already funded vacant positions in other departments, such as public works or recreation and parks, and utilize the city's policies and procedures to their full extent. We recognize the city is making strides, but we urge you not to lose momentum. SEIU commits to a continued partnership with the city to improve upon public sector vacancies. We endeavor to see these positions filled equitably and sustainably, because in the end, the strength of our workforce is the strength of our city. Thank you, and I'm available for any questions if you have any.
Any questions of Ms. Bryant?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions for staff?
Any questions of Ms. Reynoso?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Soto?
In, in one of the slides you presented, the percentage of promotions, I believe, it was like a, a slide where you were showcasing some data points around promotions, vacancies, new hires. I'm curious what the industry, and I believe that in there, you mentioned that 33% vacancies were filled by promotions, and I'm curious, curious if, if anybody by any chance knows what the industry standard is, and if we're, we're competitive or aligned with that industry standard.
I don't have industry standard across either public or private sector, but 33% is a strong percentage based on my previous private sector experience.
And then in terms of vacancy, vacancy rates, how, like, do we have metrics, benchmarks that, that, that the city has established to, to determine whether or not, benchmarks that we want to meet when it comes to, like, the number of vacancies that we want to have? Not that we ever want to have vacancies, but, like, oh, we're falling behind, we have too many vacancies, you know, our benchmark is X, no more than, I don't know, I don't know if I'm making any sense, but...
Of course. We have not yet established benchmarks, and to be honest with you, this is a catalyst to do so. So it is something that we are in progress, looking at and taking this deep dive into the vacancies and really aligning the organization with what our workforce needs are. I do appreciate Nicole's kind words and commitment to working together to do that, because it is, it is a large project that we need to engage in, which is to really look at our workforce and make sure that we're serving the community well.
And my other question is around the number of vacancies that we have and the length of time those vacancies have been, those positions have been vacant. And, and during SEIU's presentation, they alluded to how that essentially may attribute to some inflated numbers in, in our staffing allocations in our budget, and so I'm curious if there's been any, if, if, if you've looked into that and what, what the plans are to address that? And I know that we have a new finance director.
Right, and we've already established a meeting to talk about staffing and to address the vacancies, to look at the length of time that they've been vacant, but it really also is a partnership with city leadership and employees to look at what positions are vital and what positions do we need to look at why they've been vacant so long.
And then my last question is around the equity adjustments that, that are, that's a part of our MOU with, with, with SEIU. And so my question is, like, if you can give us, if, if one, you can explain what those... And so my question is like, if you can give us, if one, you can explain what those equity adjustments are for folks who may not know, and where we're at with this year's equity adjustments.
Yes, of course. The equity adjustments, what that lingo really means is that we are provided through the provision in the MOU, we're provided with a number of positions that SEIU would like to pause it for an equity review. And what that means is we look at our comparator agencies and see where we are competitive-wise in pay with those comparator agencies that we've established with SEIU. The current MOU provided for two cycles of review of the equity adjustments. We provided the first round earlier in the year, and we are continuing to look at the second round. SEIU has provided us a number of classifications that staff has started to pull data, so that we can negotiate, right, go and look at the data and see what we can implement to make us competitive and equitable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I get further comment on that? Is that allowed?
Yes, please.
For the equity adjustments, SEIU, like I said, we have 123 classifications. FIRE as a whole has 10. Equity adjustments are easily negotiated at a bargaining table when you only have 10 classifications you're looking at. What an equity review really entails is matching the job descriptions, matching the duties, and then ensuring that we are meeting comparable pay. With a unit at our size, with the number of actual classifications that we have, it's unattainable to do all of ours all at once. So we have language, this is the initial contract that this language has been in, that allows us to progressively, proactively address these for our unit ongoing in a different manner that police or FIRE would be able to address their classification inequities because of their limited number of specific job descriptions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bryant. Any other questions, comments?
I see this maybe a little differently. I just see this as coming down from Sacramento and taking local control. I see it as one-size-fits-all, and then it's hard to balance the whole thing. I see the necessity for the equity adjustments because things change from year to year, and if you have a new department head, things are going to change even more. The needs of communities change. I mean, we're going through the General Plan Amendment right now. Those, a lot of that changes, and our focus changes, too. I have seen vacancies open, and I can remember thinking, we had someone hired, he, twice, no-shows. Okay, so we have to go back through the whole system again. It's going to take a while to do this again, to go back through the interviews and everything. I've seen times we thought someone had someone hired, and he comes in and says, I want to work from home. And I think COVID changed a lot of this, and so we are also having to make adjustments. So I just don't like the, what it takes from our local control. I think the transparency is great, I think we need to do that. We have a great workforce here in the city of Santa Maria, and I just think it's amazing. I think it's amazing. Career progression is very, very important. People that were born and raised here or come here to live, I think it's important that they know that they can progress in the city of Santa Maria, and that we encourage it, because we want that to happen. And it's really important to me to hire from within. I think that's really important. I think the recognition that we do for employees is really important. You know, we can say thank you, and we've got so many great employees that do, every day go above and beyond what their job description says. And we have job descriptions that, as I said, change, probably change monthly, I don't know, you would know better than myself.
Yeah. I'm like, don't they have to go through the...
And we need to be competitive. But I think it's really important that we get the best of the best, and I don't think this is the answer to it, but I don't know what the answer is.
But isn't this just a report? Like, isn't that what this Assembly Bill is?
Well, we're going to have to do a lot, we're going to have to do a lot more, because I can just see lawsuits coming up with this. I don't know, we have an attorney here, but I just, I just don't, I just, I really don't like the loss of local control, and I think that's just another one of those things. So anyway.
And the purpose of the bill was to enhance transparency as to vacancies, so that we can partner with labor groups and the governing board, and that's what we're doing here today, so I appreciate the time. I do want to tell you that staff is dedicated to bringing on the best employees and retaining them through engagement efforts and reviews like we talked about today. Hopefully, the compensation and classification review that we're planning to do will be done within nine to 10 months. Hopefully, that also will shine a light on, you know, modernization of our job classifications.
I just don't want to see us hiring somebody because we're not meeting a certain quota to hire, because I think, I think what Santa Maria's always done is hire what we thought was the best, and that's what we have. Any other comments?
I wanted to ask you one thing. If you don't fill those vacancies, are they taken from you, from the state?
There's a variety of methods that we use for position control, is what we call. They are generally not taken if they're not hired, if they're budgeted. They're generally left, but I'll defer to Dave if he wants to add anything to that.
Because I know that the state has control over what, vacancies, and when they're not filled for a while, they can pull them, or they can put a hold on it, so that was my concern. Have our vacancies been vacant for a long time?
Many have, and many in the positions that are, some positions are easier to fill and more in demand at the city, depending on our workload. So there is a variety of dates that they have been, the vacancies have been open.
Okay, appreciate it.
I would point out that public safety, for example, are ones that are filled quite frequently for obvious reasons, so there, it's a very complex system that we're administering.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I want to open a public hearing. Any requests to speak?
No, Madam Mayor.
And any written comments?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
It's a presentation, right?
Yeah, but I still have to have a motion.
So moved.
So moved.
Because it's a public hearing, yeah. Okay, move, and a second? Okay, any further discussion? If not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Flores?
Aye.
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Escobedo?
Aye.
Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Ms. Renoso. Thank you very much, Ms. Bryant. The next will be a report by City Manager David Rowlands.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. There's a couple items coming up. In June, again, the May 20th council meeting has been canceled. We have a payment management presentation, we'll have the SB 1 Annual Report, and the consolidation of the Guadalupe Transit Program. Just, I represented the Central Coast Community Energy Board at the CalCCA Conference. The number one topic down there was battery storage, and that was number one thing. I think I might have been the only one in the room who was saying we need gas vehicles, we need to have options, so I did stand out on that area, but it was very good to get the information out there and have a nice exchange of ideas back and forth, and just kind of get a better understanding of the Central Coast Community Energy, how they work, and what they're trying to do out there. And this week, I gave a couple of talks to the breakfast rotary, the noon rotary, the Board of Realtors, and I also want to take the opportunity right now, didn't want to take away the thunder from the chief this morning, but I really want to thank publicly Commander Cohen. He's done a remarkable job to step up and do the interim chief process for us. Been here a long time. He's been professional throughout the whole time I've been here, through the selection process, achieved, and I really wanted to recognize you publicly and say I'm very appreciative of your professionalism and the way you've handled yourself, and it's commendable to you, and you're a role model to all the men and women in the department, and other employees here at the city. I just want to say thank you for that. I know it might have been a difficult situation, but you've done a very, very good job, and I just want to say thank you publicly. Mayor, thank you.
What meeting is canceled?
The 20th.
The June 3rd?
May 20th.
Was that a motion?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Dan, I didn't see you, I thought, where's Dan? I know I saw him earlier, and I kept looking at that chair over there, but you were hiding from me. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Flores, shall we start with you?
Nothing. Delivering my grandbaby. I was gone.
Good for you.
Congratulations. That's huge. So great.
Ms. Escobedo?
No, I didn't deliver.
You didn't deliver anything, okay.
No, just, first, I would like to recognize the great job that I've done, provided during this time as an interim chief of police. I had the opportunity of talking about many things, and he was always very responsive, very professional, so we're happy to have you, Dan, and thank you for everything that you did, you've been doing in the city, and looking forward to keep working together. And regarding my report, on April 26, I attended the firefighter, firefighter Alvin Newton, 55-year member's ceremony, and on May, by the way, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, that's big time. And May 3, I also participated in Serve Santa Maria, and just recognition to Pastor Nelson for great, great job, again, another year with a lot of hands-on, and shout out to my crew, the Santa Maria Action, that we cleaned up by the railroad, a whole street. There was a couple of, maybe 20 bags full of trash, and you could find so many things that I will not disclose them right now.
I told you so. I told you so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sarah?
Oh, sorry, apologies. No reportable items, but I do want to take a moment to applaud our library staff. I've been going in with my daughter to some of the classes, community classes that they offer, like toddler time, and everybody's so great, and I really want to encourage residents to check out our library, and just a huge shout out to the team who make it run every day.
Thank you. That is an amazing library. People just don't realize it. Thank you. Mrs. Aguilar Hernandez?
Yep, I attended the Avenue Firefighter Memorial, and I also attended the Kite Festival the following day, which was a lot of fun. It was a little cloudy, but it actually worked well with the wind. There was a lot of families, a lot of people through the Discovery Museum. It was a great time. And congratulations on becoming a grandma again for two babies on the way.
One down, one to go.
April 16, I met with the Veggie Rescue Leaders to talk about how we can promote Veggie Rescue here in Santa Maria. And April 17, SB CAG Board Meeting. And at SB CAG, we do regional issues, and we're talking more and more about the monies that need to be spent up in North County to redo 135 off of North Broadway, to redo Main Street, and to redo Betaravia interchanges, and how it's going to be done for, what, 10 years? It'll be 15 years. The money was spent down in South County because we needed to do the 101, and so now that money's got to come up north. And it's really sort of a challenge, because some of these people haven't been there for the whole movie, and so they're coming in the middle, and they're thinking they want the money in their area, so, but...
Our turn.
Don't worry, I'm fighting for our money up here, and I have Mr. Fullgoney helping me with that. On the 20th, went to the Santa Maria Post Office that was renamed to Larry Lavenino, and our Congressman Salud Carvajal was there, and of course, Larry cries real easy, and so I told him, so when I get these complaints about the post office, I am going to forward all of them to him, and he said he would address the complaints for us. It's amazing the complaints we get, but anyway. On the 22nd, I attended the Community Development Free Public Resource Fair, attended the strawberry dinner, which was, I think, 750 people or close to 800. The firefighter, on April 26, the firefighter Alvin Newton Ceremony, which was very, very well-done and very nice. It was great to see the family there. The West Coast, I attended the West Coast Customs Car Show Meeting. That will be coming up on the 23rd and 24th of this month, and I, Santa Maria must all know about it, because I'll tell you what, they start lining up for the cruise on that Friday, like, at noon. By 2:00 in the afternoon, it's like two lines of people sitting up. And on the 29th, I attended the OBGYN, OBGYN residency program here in Santa Maria. This residency program that Marion has developed, we are keeping some of the doctors in our community, and I heard this one woman say she came up here to do a residency. She said, I'd never heard of Santa Maria before, I didn't know what it was. I thought, well, I think I'll apply. We have a lot of people apply for the residency program, and very, very few get in. Maybe about, you'll have a few hundred apply, and there's like openings for like 10, eight or 10 people. And she said, we're not going to go back to Los Angeles, we love it here, we're going to stay here, and there, she now has a baby, and they want to raise their children here. On the 30th of April, the APCD had an open house, and I wish I didn't write down the address. It's on West McCoy, and it's old, it was a Segura Security Building. And if you have a chance, I told them I was going to tell the world to go and see that building, they have done a beautiful job in that. So now APCD has an office up here, and SB CAG will be, hopefully will be holding our meetings there also, so it won't be at the Government Center. So it'll all be held there. They just did an amazing job of that building, and I applauded them because they didn't do avocado green or orange in the decor. That evening, I went to Tommy Coons Junior High to do the, to see our Santa Maria PD do a presentation on gangs and drugs informational meeting for parents. And on May 1, attended the National Day of Prayer Gathering. Did Serve Santa Maria last Saturday, and we planted, I can't say we really planted trees, they got planted, and then we just put the dirt around them, and we just sort of stomped on them so they could get, I don't think they trusted us to really plant the trees.
It was part of the planting process.
It is. And then went over to the Santa Maria Bridge, and it's sort of like the Golden Gate Bridge. As soon as, you know, you finish painting it, you have to come back and start all over again, and so we painted, we only got halfway through, and I don't know why or what, but we ran out of paint, so we halfway did the, under the bridge, which has been, a lot of the artists, local artists have been painting. So on May 4, I attended 100th Birthday for Mary Goodspeed, who has been just a wonderful woman in our community that has given a lot, and through St. Mary's Parish. And May 6, did the Ben Hayes radio segment, and I think that's it. Anything else? That is it, ladies and gentlemen, thank you. That is it, ladies and gentlemen, thank you.